The City Council is hereby called to order. Sometimes you get in old patterns and they're hard to kick. As far as looking around the table, Alderman Majikis from the 3rd Ward is expected this evening. She has a work commitment that started at 6:30 and she said as soon as they're done, she'll be here. So we are expecting her to be in attendance this evening. Also, folks who are watching at home will notice that all of a sudden around 8:30, my appearance will change because it'll be Alderman Diestis sitting in the chair. I'm going to be heading down to Springfield for lobby day with the Northwest Municipal Conference mayors and need to get there at a reasonable hour to get up in the morning. So I'm here for the beginning at roughly 8:15, 8:20, 8:30. If there's a reasonable break in the conversation, I'll go. And if not, you may see me slide out while the speaker is speaking. So, that's all I know of at the top of the meeting this evening. The first item on the agenda is a report from Clark Street Development. And so, Mr. Duda, I know I saw him in the back there and I see him coming forward. Mr. Crumstock, is there a staff introduction for this item?
Per request by the City Council, Clark Street Development is actually here to give an update. Sorry for people who just heard the... We weren't going to rest you, so don't worry. But they are here to do a presentation and with that I will leave Fritz to do. He does have some stuff to distribute. It's the PR stuff that they actually do utilize. And Adam, who most of you have not met, is new to Clark Street, relatively new, and he really is part of this entire development and trying to market everything.
And Mr. Motion, welcome to you as well. Mr. Duda, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Fritz Duda, Clark Street Development. We are the owners of the vacant Dominics right across the street here. And thanks for the opportunity to come in and happy St. Patrick's Day, of course. Quick timeline, I'm going to real quickly tell you where we've been, where we are, and Adam's going to pick up where we are and where we think we're going. There's no great announcements tonight. I'll remove that expectation now. But December 2011, we acquired the note. We were actually the lender of the property. In August of 2012, we acquired the deed to the property and became the fee simple owner. And as you know, in the middle of 2012 and running through the fall, we started a conversation with a... one of the family members of the Caputos, Joseph Caputo chain. They were working on a concept called Uncle Joe's Tuscan Fresh Market. Many of you remember that. We entered into lease negotiations, actually had a completed letter of intent, full CDs, construction drawings on redeveloping the center, financing line. All the ducts were in the row at the time. We applied for a PD. If you remember, the property had been rezoned back to a mixed-use residential, commercial under a previous regime, although the buildings still were there. So we put that back to commercial zoning and it had a PD approved. So we presented back then in, I think that was in the first quarter of 2013. For a host of reasons, I think you guys are aware of, the Uncle Joe's transaction didn't come to fruition. We spent a good chunk of 2013 trying to Band-Aid that back together unsuccessfully. And then in the third quarter of 2013, Dominics announced they were exiting the Chicago Market and vacated 72 of their stores here. Jokingly say, we were a vacant Dominics before it became fashionable. But that did not help us. And if you recall, a year ago, we were in front of you. If you remember, you guys were kind enough to grant us a Class C tax exemption in connection with the redevelopment of our property. A year ago, we came in for an extension on that and what I told you at that time, the market's going to have to absorb these 72 Dominics before really anything happens. What's happened to date with those Dominics and what I handed out was actually a map of who's taking what. But roughly 28 of the 72 Dominics are still available. Many of those are leaseholds and some of them have short-term issues. But if you look at your map, and I did not have the time to put the right key to it, but the dark blue arrows are the ones that have not been claimed. The red star, of course, where we're sitting tonight is us. And you'll see there's five Dominics closest to us that have not been claimed. And then the lighter blue, there's four. Those were all picked up by Joseph Caputo and Sons. They have, I think, opened two of those four and haven't redeveloped the other two. So the absorption process, the point is the absorption process is still continuing. And even major tenants like Whole Foods haven't reopened the... I think they acquired seven and I think they've opened one or two of those. So that's still a work in process. I did want to touch on, because I think the work was well-served back in 2010. Mike Mallon did a market study for you guys and had some recommendations specifically with our property as well as retail in general. And his point was, our corner is neighborhood commercial. And neighborhood commercial lends itself largely to grocery, to things like fitness, to things like medical. Plan A is an anchored plan, which I agree with. And his recommendation, Plan B, is a junior anchored plan where you have to bring two, three, or four smaller users in the 10,000 to 20,000-foot category. We continue to pursue that plan. And we brought on last fall Adam, who's our... heads up our leasing effort for all of our properties. And this is, believe me, at the top of his pile. So I want to turn the floor a little bit over to Adam and tell you what we've done in the marketing efforts and what we're continuing to do. So with that...
Thanks, Fritz. So what we've done is we've taken the national tenants that were... basically turned this center into a single anchor with some small shops. And we've gone down that list. And since then, we've then gone to what I would consider as a Plan 1A. And that is the junior anchor plan that Fritz kind of touched on. And what that allows us to do is have two, three, four, five different junior anchors to quote, "turn into an anchor into that center." And we're continuing to work through that process. Fortunately, we have some tenants that are interested, but it becomes a snowball and it's who else do you have, who else do you have? And until you almost have three or four of them, it's very difficult to get the ball rolling. So we're continuing, as you'll see Fritz handed out a list there. Oh, I should add, one of the things that we did when I first joined the company is we updated and changed all the marketing materials, which has been a very, very positive feedback from the prospective tenants that we've spoken to to date.
We're available to answer any questions. The marketing effort continues. Finding misright or a series of misrights is our A-plan. We will be coming in with a request to extend again the Class C designation. We think that's very important to the future of the shopping center. The reason is the rents in this submarket, shop rents roughly, call it $15 to $22 a foot, do not support new construction. But we have a building there that has steel and deck and concrete that's valuable and we think it's worth roughly $50 a foot in a new redevelopment. So it allows us to redevelop the center and deliver market rents at the same time. If we had to scrape it, we don't think you could build retail back there and make it economically feasible. So we'll be coming in and asking for that relief. We're not the only ones. Cook County is going with the recommendation of the City Councils all over the place. Many of these have been extended a number of times. So expect to see that. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Mr. Crumstock?
Before you do any questions, there is another part. Obviously, in the write-up, we did talk about, it does have the no further remediation letter that's actually on the property. And Fritz, obviously, we've talked a little bit about it, but could you also talk about some of the housing groups that have actually talked to you?
Well, sure. You know, the Mallon study, actually I'll put it up again today because it's been a little while, but recommended if not retail, then residential is probably the next highest and best use, whether that's apartments or townhomes. It's actually outside of what Clark Street does. I call it reimagining the property if it's not going to be a retail shopping center. And that would be our next stage when we get to, after completing our marketing efforts. On the no further remediation letter, yes, you know, we cleaned up the cleaners problem that went right after we acquired the fee simple interest. We've actually demolished pretty much anything inside the buildings being flammable and cleared it all out because it just becomes an attractive nuisance. We've worked with the fire department on that. They've been wonderful in helping us get rid of the stuff that's inside there.
And Mr. Cannon, this item is in at your request. You're entitled to first comments if you'd like them, sir.
Great, thank you. I wanted to thank both of you for coming up tonight and giving us an update what's going on. I guess a couple of questions I have. I'm curious, your picture here is very pretty.
Yeah.
Is something happening with that strip center that's on the east end of the property that we're not aware of?
Uh, no. The latest I know is that the property did not sell and it's continued to be owned by the same family that's owned it for a while. It's... I think it's either shaded or out of the picture on our drawings.
It's not there, that's why I was wondering if there was something...
It's in the shadow, yeah.
We try and... Yes, we do try and...
Okay, I apologize, I do see it now.
Yeah, we don't own or control that.
Okay. I guess the other question I wanted to ask is, you know, I appreciate all the efforts you're trying to make to get this going. I was wondering, have you had any actual contractual discussions with anybody where you've got down that far where people are actually really interested in going in?
Not since the Uncle Joe's, no.
That's the last one.
Correct.
Even any of these junior people?
The junior people, the responses we get when it's positive is, let me know when you have it all together. And that's out of things like the fitness category, the medical category. We've had a number of guys from the self-storage category, we've kind of put them on the side because they don't... they're not really conducive to a retail development, but...
Part of what you're... the first step is not only send them the information, but you want to get them... I'm sorry. Not only... one of the first parts in the process, not only is you want to show them and send them the information, is you want to send them where they... when they're on tour in the market, they're coming by the property. And one of the pluses is you see what we're going to turn the property into. One of the negatives is they see the way it looks currently. So it takes some time for people to understand it. And with that, as Fritz mentioned, you're turning... you have to have two or three of the, call it, junior plans for them to kind of step and go to the next stage.
So would it be safe to assume then that's the way, as you guys as developers, you wouldn't start redeveloping until you had at least two onboard or three?
Correct.
One wouldn't get you going anywhere?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless it's an anchor use. I mean, it's really more square footage.
Sure.
Of the 133,000 square feet, if we can get to 60% or 70%, that would be the goal.
Okay. So I guess the last comment I would just make, and this is maybe just a personal observation, I guess I would just ask you guys, knowing that you don't want to spend any more money there than you have to until you get things going, if you could do anything to make the place look a little nicer, you know, the streets... the street sign on Kirchhoff is really looking rugged. Again, I'm not asking to spend, put up a brand-new sign or anything like that, but maybe paint it or, I don't know, it's got broken panes in there now.
Yeah.
The building itself's got plywood on it. I guess, again, I'm not asking... I understand you don't want to spend any more money than you have to, but maybe you paint the plywood or something. I mean, it looks like a slum.
Yeah.
I mean, I hate to say that, but I mean, people who don't even come downtown very much, I live out in the western end of town. So a lot of the people living near me don't come down a lot. When they come down, they're like, wow.
Yeah.
It's just, it's pretty stark.
We're happy to look into all those.
I appreciate that, thanks. And again, thank you very much for coming tonight, we appreciate it.
A few questions that I have. Mr. Duda, you mentioned some of these Dominics on the map here are leaseholds. Can you define that leasehold term for us, please?
Oh, so Dominics is, instead of the... when they own... we own the fee simple, we own the land under the shopping center. Many of these shopping centers, Dominics only has a lease. And in some cases, that lease may only have, I don't know, five or seven or 10 years left on it. And so it makes it much more difficult for a Caputos or a Peet's or another grocer to come in and buy that lease because it's not what they want. They'd rewrite it, terminate it, but the landlords won't terminate the leases. So it's much easier to rationalize fee simple real estate than it is leasehold real estate.
And so with that being out there, what we're saying is, that's exactly the process that the previous owner of this property used to leave our city hanging in the wind when Dominics left. That, oh, well, there's a leasehold here and it's really not advantageous for us to blah, 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 blah.
Largely, the landlords of those properties can't do anything because the tenant has the right to go dark.
Correct. Second one, you mentioned the Class C that was awarded by Cook County through a process that had to get approval from us too and so forth and so on. What exactly are the rules about how that Class C kicks in? Like, when does that start? What occupancy level or square footage level or whatever else?
It starts whenever we give them notice to start it. So there's a term to the Class C and I think it's 10 years is the 60% reduction and then it steps down at year 11 and again at year 12 and then it ends. And you guys have been very clear that you don't renew those. I think that was from the very first meeting. But it doesn't start until, I think, we have a C of O on the new redevelopment, until that's completed. And so all we're really doing is delaying the start date of the clock. We're not losing any time.
And C of O is certificate of occupancy?
Yes, certificate of occupancy. So we're not losing any time on it. The clock's not ticking on us until we say it starts ticking.
And so another way of looking at it is also, the benefits haven't started for you guys yet either.
Exactly.
Okay. Last one, kind of like Mr. Cannon, is more of an observation. It's not really a question. But as I know, we've talked, you guys are the ones who are having to spend the money on the tax bill that's due and everything else like that. And we know it's no picnic for you guys. But I don't think you get anywhere near as many phone calls as we at this table do. I don't think you get anywhere near as many emails as we at this table do. I don't think you've been stopped by as many people at Jewel or anything else as we do of what's going to happen with the Dominics. When is something going to go into the Dominics and so forth and so on? So sort of, kind of, on behalf of the people here at this table and sort of, kind of, on behalf of the people of City of Rolling Meadows, we know you're working and we appreciate that. Boy, this is kind of really killing us all with the wait. And so we wish you the best of luck. Please, whatever you can tell us, anytime something starts to look positive, please do so because people are really tired of the property. And that is because of the eight years it's spent where it wasn't in your hands. And so we know that some of the pressures may be a little unfair, but we've been waiting a long time. Further comments or questions around the table? Mr. Baner, then Mr. Judd, then Mr. Veenbus. Mr. Baner?
Thank you. This is just a little business report in the trip yesterday. Aldi's is expanding like 82 stores in the area. I'm just going to throw that out there. That's a great story. I don't know if it's too close to the others, but I'm sure you guys are looking at all of these.
Yes, we love them. And they are pretty close, but yes, they're on... they've been... we've touched them, yes.
We have spoken with them. As it early as like two weeks ago, so yes, they're on the list for sure.
Mr. Judd, you are next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Class C, you know, there's a note in here that says about residential. I would assume the Class C would go away if you sold it to residential, correct?
Yeah, the Class C, and my former counsel could probably clarify that, but I think it relates only to commercial redevelopment, existing commercial and rehabilitation and redevelopment of commercial properties.
Okay. And in the event that this would go residential, which I'm not suggesting it would, but I know that one of my concerns has always been the remediation, that you left two parcels encapsulated, the foreign auto parts and then the parking lot.
Yes.
Because you didn't have to touch them because they're encapsulated.
Yes.
What ramifications that have if this goes residential? Obviously, there's going to be significant cost to clean that.
There may be. And it's the difference between, I think, Tier 1 cleanup standards to Tier 2, which would allow residential. And we have not turned over that leaf yet because we're not hoping to go there, but...
And just to confirm, that's not something you would come back to us for?
We would not be building residential on the property.
No, but I mean, in the process of trying to... if you decided to sell it, you know, obviously, the guy's going to find out that there's issues. It's not something that's going to come back... you're not going to come back to our, this council and say, you know, we need more help. No, correct?
No, we won't.
Okay. Yeah, I would just kind of echo what Alderman Cannon mentioned about the plywood, you know, if you, you know, I get it, you don't want to spend a lot of money, but you know, if you could replace those, I think that would at least... Class A, a lot of residents, you know, because of the condition it's in. And like your colleague mentioned, that as you drive by, it looks like garbage. I wouldn't, you know, I'd be like, okay, you've got way too much money to put in this. This isn't going to happen overnight, I'm going to go elsewhere. At least if it looked like a feasible operation, it might turn... get somebody to talk to you a little bit quicker. And I know I'm probably jumping the ball way, way ahead, but just so, you know, anybody that doesn't know me knows where I stand if you do go residential. I am not opposed to condos or townhouses, but if you talk to somebody about apartments, I won't be voting anywhere along the line of that. I was opposed to Bristol and I'd be opposed to that as well. So not that you're anywhere near that, but just signifying where I'd be. Thank you.
Mr. Veenbus, you are next.
Yeah, to echo a few comments, but I live kind of on the business world myself, running businesses, so I get where you're at. And I also respect and understand the difference between government and private, okay? But with that in mind too, is there anything we can do to help you? I mean, are you... I mean, I know we have staff and we're doing what we kind of do, but outside of some classifications of things, is there anything, you know, that would market us differently than a Palatine or...
The thing that... well, the press generally has been very good with, on the employment base. When you read the employers that have moved into Rolling Meadows, when people... when council asks me, what can we do? I always say, make your schools great. Because that's where everything is. It's not something that we get. It's... that's what drives the community. I'll tell you, the staff has been fantastic to work with. Our interests are aligned with your interests in that we want a retail shopping center there, the whole thing, retail. It's a lot of retail for one neighborhood corner when you combine our center with Jewel. And really, I think what we're hearing is, you know, the market is pushing back and saying it may just be too much. Does it need to be half that size? We don't know yet. But I think there's nothing I can think of specifically... you guys are doing a lot of things right, I would say.
Okay. I'm good.
Further comments or questions from the council? Then on a final note, just on that particular point, Mr. Duda, I hope, one of the things that might make it into the pitch too is that there's 200 or 300 more future shoppers that are going to be on the side of that bowling alley over the next couple of years. And so as we talk about, you know, well, you know, it's just a neighborhood, it's kind of two, both north and south of Kirchhoff. It is a bit of a destination shopping area for people in this town, even if it's not drawing in people from Algonquin or whatever. But, you know, there's going to be a whole nother stock of a couple hundred customers coming in. And hopefully, that might help entice some people too.
Yeah.
We appreciate the time that you took to come out and talk to us this evening. It's the number one thing on people's minds in Rolling Meadows. So again, please, the second you hear anything we can tell people, please tell us.
Understood, thanks.
Fair enough. Thank you for coming out, gentlemen. That'll do it for item one on the agenda this evening. Item two is the group called Nature's Care coming forward, kind of circling back to a topic we've discussed before. So, Mr. Crumstock, is there a staff introduction for this item?
Not really. We're going and turning it right over to them, but there is a PowerPoint and there's a small video, so with us, so...
Okay. The floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Mitch Myers and I'm a partner with Nature's Care. And I would like to introduce Susan, TJ, and Brian, Bessie, who are also partners with us. Terry Leidy, who's been a Realtor helping us, and Tom Bernie, who is our attorney. We are a group of individuals that applied for a medical marijuana dispensary in District 30. Our goal is to place it in Rolling Meadows at 975 Rolling Road. The owners are the operators. We are directed by a medical professional who's interested in doing research on the benefits of this medicine. It's managed by successful businesspeople and entrepreneurs. We are complemented by experienced people in the cannabis industry and we're secured by high-integrity, experienced security personnel. Dr. Richard Bly leads our medical team. He's a physician in St. Louis, Missouri. He's not in Illinois. He's not licensed in Illinois, so he will not be practicing out of our operation. He was an advanced medic in the Army. He's got his medical degree from Ross and an MBA from Southern Illinois University. He works as an emergency room physician in St. Louis and he developed his own practice in 2003. His interest is in when people actually have medical cannabis available to them, how does that affect any opiate medications that they may take? We've seen in states where this has been legal for years that there's a decline in deaths from drug overdoses once this is available. So that's his line of research. Greg Healy is a 25-year agent with the Illinois State Police. He's had many years in special ops in the state and he worked on the Southern Illinois Drug Task Force. He is a disabled veteran, led troops in Operation Iraqi Freedom. And he currently works in the Executive Protection Unit for the state. Myself, I've been in business for 25 years for myself. I ran a marketing agency. I've worked for large companies developing products and brands. TJ Singer is a proven leader with valuable startup experience. He was the president and CEO of a Chicago-based franchise for seven years. He's currently an independent contractor for Oasis PEO, which is the third-largest U.S. professional outsourcing organization. You can see our org chart. We are going to be... Brian, myself, and TJ will be the senior management of this. Susan will be helping us with our palliative care. This dispensary will be a very consultative operation. When patients come in, they're going to have an intake session and be counseled and that will be led by Susan. We hope to hire about 11 additional people from the local marketplace. We're doing this as a wellness approach. As you probably know, Illinois is the 22nd state to approve medical cannabis. And really, the state has learned best practices from other states where it has been legal and where they have had some issues frankly. We will be consultative. We will offer palliative care to all incoming and qualified patients. And our facility will be inviting and relaxing and not at all reflective of any stereotypical perceived marijuana dispensary. Our mission is to share the natural wellness power of cannabis in a safe and secure setting to all who may benefit it from it while adhering diligently to the Illinois state laws. We're fortunate to be informed by a group out of Maine. It's called the Wellness Connection of Maine. And I'd like to just show a two-minute video that shows you what it's like in their dispensary so you get sort of a feeling of what this will be like. Just double-click on the center of it, I think. If you go to the bottom lower-left, maybe? There you go. Can you click on that?
Yes.
We're all here for the same purpose and for the same goal. We want to provide wellness to people.
We want people to come in here and feel comfortable.
We want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to be there for our members.
We pride ourselves first on our compassionate care, meeting new people where they are.
We want to be more of a community.
Before Wellness Connection, I really was not enjoying life. I never got real relief.
We helped day in, day out, making their life better.
The Wellness Connection is a sanctuary.
It's a positive environment.
They will not be alone.
The welcoming staff puts you at ease.
They will have a team supporting them and helping them improve their life.
We here again and again, thank you for giving me my life back or putting my life back on track. And that's the core of who we are.
Wellness Connection of Maine is a medical marijuana dispensary group.
Our members are a snapshot of the society that they live in. You know, we are people from all walks of life. Sometimes people come to us, they're nervous or on the fence about it, and our job is to kind of ease that transition.
I think it's important for people to know that they're walking into a safe place that's full of compassionate people that are educated and capable of walking them through this journey.
They're going to help you choose the strain that works for you, choose the delivery method that's going to work for you. They're going to give you advice on how to start using this so that when you get home with that medicine, you're going to have a positive experience.
You see a lot of really sick people come through the doors and you see a lot of people leave really happy.
They will make you feel right at home and at ease. They answer every question I've ever had.
We offer that to everyone because there are so many different ways that medical cannabis can help people.
I was a little bit nervous because I didn't know what it was going to be like, but
once I came in the door, actually, I was excited.
I was completely shocked when I first walked through the door here.
I love the feeling when you walk in.
I did not expect the bright colors, the warm atmosphere. It's such a cool, comforting place to be.
Absolute relief. You can actually sigh and take a deep breath, and that's no joke.
Barry, you can turn that off.
Our members can rest assured that they are getting whole flower.
So, we like, we like the learning that they've had over the last four years. They have training modules that we can work with our employees on. So, anybody who actually interviews to come to work here, clearly they've never worked in a cannabis dispensary unless they've lived in other states. So, we'll be able to help them understand what these jobs are really like. The main difference between our dispensary and the one you just saw, you saw those buds in jars, and people actually touching and handling that. We will not have product displayed at all when you walk into this dispensary. It's all going to be done on iPads, in counseling offices, at maybe one of those side tables with one of the product managers. 975 Rolling looks like this. It is currently construction offices. We plan to do a little facelift on the front of that. Sasha is here from St. Louis. He's our architect and spent a lot of hours there today measuring and just making sure we know what we need for the place. We're laying out the parking, so that we have ample parking for patients, and, and we have about 10 spots in front with two wheelchair spots, as well as in the back of the building. This is one of their dispensaries that we like this look a lot. Again, you will not walk into a place that has product displayed around, but you will see pictures on the wall. There will be a lot of informational messaging that people can take with them. The products that we'll carry, we will have strains in dried bud form, but in the state of Illinois, there's nothing that's loose that people can touch or smell. It will all be packaged in, we, we will not make the product, we'll be buying it from cultivation operations, but it'll all have to be packaged in some fashion with the weight and the testing information, and how much CBD or THC is in something. We're also going to offer oils, tinctures, tablets. There will be some edible items and protein-enhanced drinks, and then topical creams, sprays, patches, sublingual strips. This is one cultivation operation that we're currently working with, and we know this is the line of products, they're calling it Solacine. So, this will be tablets, sprays, tinctures, and oils, and as you can see, it has a very medicinal look to it. Our staff will not be wearing, they will not be tatted up, and they will not be, you know, wearing really casual clothes. They're going to have white lab coats on. This will be the signage on the front of our building. It will be a two-foot by two-foot, non-illuminated sign. It will be next to the front door. It will have our address, our hours of operation, and a statement that says, only cardholders, caregivers, and staff can enter these premises, and that they are under video surveillance at all times. Our security, the state, the state of Illinois really dictates robust security for these operations. And we are, again, keeping in mind best practices from other states and our sister agency in Maine. We'll have state-of-the-art motion, sound, and recording systems that will be accessible in real time to local law enforcement and state police. So, we will have a website portal that the police station can actually look at our cameras in real time, anytime that they want to. Or if there's an alarm that goes off after hours, they'll be able to dial up that website and see what's going on there. We also have to have backup video of all the actual film, 90 days on-premise, and another 90 days backed up off-premise. However, we don't want our patients to feel like there's security all around them. They're not going to feel like there's any more than there is in a bank, or an art museum, or a jewelry store. Only patients with a current medical card or their caregiver will be permitted to enter the dispensary. So, if you're aware of the law, there are 35 very serious illnesses, from cancer to MS to Parkinson's, and you have to have, be seen by a specialist in that area. They have to fill out a five-page report on you, saying that, yes, I have been seeing this patient, they do have this affliction, and I think they would benefit from medical cannabis. The patient then has to submit fingerprints and a background check, and all of, there's like eight pages the patient has to fill out, and submit that to the state, and then if the state approves them, they send them a card. And they have a very specific ID number, and once they get that ID number, and the state releases the locations, they will give a patient maybe two or three dispensary locations in their geographic area. So, they will say, there's one in Rolling Meadows, there's one in Schaumburg, and there's one in Wheeling. And the patient will have the ability to go on to our website, and I'm assuming the others, put in their patient ID. So, if you do not have a card, you cannot come to our website and see what's available in our dispensary. You have to have that state-issued ID to get in. So, they can see what we have available, what the interior looks like, what our process is, make a decision where they want to go, and then they register that with the state. So, they are not permitted to drive from dispensary to dispensary and get more medicine. They will have to scan their card in every place and make sure that they're not, you know, getting too much product. We have secured a banking relationship. The Bank of Springfield has, is working with us and four other groups to provide all the normal banking services, from credit cards, cash, check, not cash, but checks and wire transfers, which will assure that we're not dealing in cash, which is a big risk in some of the other states. We have six management personnel that'll be salaried. We'll have 11 hourly personnel that'll have flexible position and hours. We'll be paying above-market wages, and we hope to have a full benefit package for these jobs. We're going to request that all of our employees be 21, pass a background check, and a drug test. We're looking for college education, experience in nursing or palliative care, HR, accounting, security, sales and business management, and we hope to prioritize veterans. Our hours of operation, we worked with Chief Scanlon. We will have Monday through Friday, 10 through 7:00. And we met with the Harvest Bible Church today, and they have requested on Saturday that maybe we start at 9:00 and close at 4:00, because their church service starts at 4:30 on Saturday, and it's their most crowded service. So, we have agreed to do that, just so that there's not traffic issues for us or them. Our timeline is, we've received authorization from the state. They've chosen our group as the winning applicant. We are now in the process of applying for this special use permit from Rolling Meadows. We understand the second reading and the final will be May 12th. We're very hopeful for a positive outcome here, and we will then file all of our paperwork to the state to get our final registration. We'll then move to renovate that building and be available September 1st for patient sales. So, how does your community benefit? You're going to be helping people who are suffering from debilitating diseases without forcing them into the black market. There's going to be 17 good-paying jobs in a new industry here. Local contractors will be employed for renovation. We're going to do education throughout Rolling Meadows and District 30 about drug addition and safe usage of medical cannabis, and safeguarding it from the youth. Medicine is taxed at 1% for all medical products, and any non-cannabis products would be at your regular sales tax rate. And we project that by year two, which is a full 12 months, that we'll be exceeding $100,000 annually for the city. We have a community development fund established to support efforts in Rolling Meadows that benefit the health and welfare of all citizens. In meeting with Chief Scanlon, he mentioned that he has a social worker that he thinks is very valuable to the community. And if we could create a grant that would perhaps allow them to hire another one of those, that, that would help the, the welfare of the community. So, we have built that into our P and L at this point, and, and hope to support that. We're also have funds available in years two and beyond to support major research for epilepsy, cancer. We're working with hospice organizations here. And we also think that the improvement of the building from its current estate assures that there'll be an increase in real estate taxes. We're working with the Epilepsy Foundation of the Greater Chicago Area, working with hospice, working with the Veterans Administration, American Cannabis Nurses Association, and the Illinois Nurses Association. So, this is a new industry that's coming to the state. It's being embraced by people who need the medical benefit that cannabis can provide. Nature's Care plans to operate with the highest level of integrity, and we're taking more precaution than is really required to make this medicine available in a regulated, taxed, tested, and safe manner to the people in District 30. And this business being available in the city of Rolling Meadows will make you part of this compassionate program by making it accessible. Thank you, and we'll take any questions.
I'd like to start with a few, if you don't mind. You guys, by definition, in District 30 beat out two other people who were looking for a license. At any time during the process and the awarding, did they tell you what it was that made you guys get it over the other organizations? Did they provide anything anecdotally as to why they went with you?
They did not. We, we have met with the group, and we have viewed their license versus ours, and I believe our security plan was more detailed. They had mentioned something about having a physician on site, and, and I think the state actually frowns on that. They want to make sure there's separation between who's writing a script and who's actually selling it. They don't want you, like, driving business to your own, so I don't know if that tripped them up. We think they're very good actors. You know, they're, they're great people, and they had all the right intent, so it's hard for me to say. We, we had some bonus points, I think, that we scored well on, we're minority-owned, so that could have helped us as well.
As you went through the presentation, you mentioned that the Bank of Springfield is the one that's going to be the one that's involved here. Why the Bank of Springfield?
Well, banking has been a challenge in this industry, just because with cannabis still being on Schedule I, many banks, and any banks who cross a state line, can't offer banking services. So, we actually had a bank in Southern Illinois that stepped up and said they were willing to work with us. And then, as this industry has gotten more visibility, and obviously, it's an industry where a lot of people are getting involved, and there's a lot of, there's, there's work, and there's money to be made, these banks are figuring it out. And the government is supportive of this, because the, the risk in the system is if you're having to deal in cash. So, the Bank of Springfield is contained within the state of Illinois. That gives them benefit. They had customers, longstanding customers, who made application for cultivation and dispensary, who said to them, we need your support on this. Figure it out. So, they've been meeting with state bank regulators in Washington and in the state, and the Federal Department of Financial Regulation, and they have determined how to do this. We do know there's a company, Millennium, that is going to create the, the merchant processing for everybody, which is great. So, all the dispensaries, you can go in and use your credit card, and you don't have to take cash in, and you, you know, employees don't have to walk out with cash for a paycheck. So, I think Illinois is really benefiting from the time the other states have had to do it the wrong way, and I suspect everybody in this state will likely have a banking relationship.
Further comments or questions from the council? Mr. Pranin?
Your presentation was very nice, and I have to ask the question, I realize you were your second choice, why weren't we your first choice round?
Barry?
I can answer that. Sorry. I started, the moment they hired me to start looking for facilities, obviously, I checked everyone, and I called your planner and asked, where do you stand on, on special use? And you had just begun, I believe, that hearing process, that's back in July. Is that correct?
Could be, certainly.
And at that point in time, Palatine had already passed their, their special use. So, that was in place, and yours was not. Schaumburg's was not, well, we couldn't go into Schaumburg, but other communities were not as far along, and so, this building was on the market, and I looked at it, but there was nothing we could do, because we had to find a facility to meet our deadline for the safe application. So.
With that mentioned, before we go any farther, I would just say, I'm, I'm dying to ask you about Palatine, but I understand that we can't. So, for those who aren't familiar with the story, there, there is some form of legal thing which tends to make people not able to talk, but...
No, I mean, we're, we're frank about it. And I, I'm sorry, I'm Tom Bernie, and I called Mr. McCall as soon as we filed the complaint, because we, we don't want anybody to think we're playing Palatine off against Rolling Meadows. They changed the state statute, so in the old days, developers, landowners who were disappointed by a zoning result, had a lifetime to sue, and now you've only have 90 days. And, and Palatine delivered the bad news to us on December 15th. So, the 90 days ran out yesterday, and so, in an abundance of caution, I filed on Friday. But, but I called Mr. McCall to tell him why we're doing it. I've called the village attorney in Palatine and told them, we're not intending to proceed with that lawsuit, but we need to protect our position, so that simply time would have run out, and we wouldn't have had an opportunity to go back and challenge that decision. We would really like, we like the fact that you have welcomed this use, you've shown the political courage, which many communities haven't been willing to do. So, we can talk about the case. As far as I, as I'm concerned, I hope we dismiss it on May 13th, or the day after you guys decide. So, thank you. Thanks for asking, Mary.
Mr. Pranin, did you have further questions?
No, thank you. That was the big question.
We are really happy to be here, and, and having seen this building, and the location, and the access, and meeting with your staff, it's a much better situation, I think, for patients, for access, for us, in terms of getting the building renovated and, and worked out, and we couldn't be happier.
Mr. Crumstock?
Just some additional footnotes. Obviously, staff has met with Ms. Myers and her group, obviously, in different stages. And obviously, a, when I say staff, obviously, Chief Scanlon has actually sat down with them too, and talked to them, and obviously, their presentation has changed slightly from when we talked about it. But, just as clarification, the city council in the past gave a special use for Chicago Meds to LLC, and why we're back here tonight is also to get the temperature of the council, because at this point in time, there is a pending application to the planning commission for April 7th. If that passes through, then it would be before, a new ordinance would be before the city council for first reading on, obviously, the last meeting in April, which would be April 28th. And then, obviously, what you saw would be May 12th for that second reading.
Which is the procedure that Chicago Meds followed. If, if I'm correct, they were a committee of the whole item as well.
And that's why they're here, because, again, we just want to make sure about the temperature and everything else, and follow the same procedures that we did before.
Further comments or questions from the council? Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Herr. Just a couple of things. You, you mentioned, obviously, there's the issue with Palatine, but you mentioned local contractors. Is there going to be, not necessarily to penalize Palatine contractors, but to enhance Rolling Meadows contractors, is there going to be any additional weight put behind a Rolling Meadows contractor? I mean, you know, it's kind of a certain degree, we're, we're almost under the gun in the sense that, you know, you've filed a suit against Palatine, so we're kind of in the same boat, that if we don't do something, you know, are we going to get a suit filed against us? You know, and then all of a sudden, you know, we're kind of given the, well, we're going to, you know, use local contractors, but it just seems like a kind of a, I don't want to say a gray area, but an interesting area.
I agree with you. I think that's a great opportunity for us, and Sasha here can do whatever we can to make that stay as local as possible. We may need some help.
Okay. And then, you, you mentioned that you anticipate in year two, there's going to be roughly $100,000 in, in taxes. So, this is, that's roughly $10 million in sales. Is that, and you, if I heard correct, it's going to be an all, all non-cash business?
Yes. Yes. I mean, there may be some people that come in and pay with cash, and we can't refuse it, but most people like to pay with a credit card, so that's what we will encourage.
Okay.
And if we can wire transfer, you know, delivery of product and things like that, there, there's just no need to have any big cash transactions.
And, and will everything be pseudo pickup? I mean, I didn't ask this to the other company, but is everything, somebody has to come into you, you're not going to have any kind of where, I can't get out of my house, and you'll, you'll either deliver it or mail it to me?
No, you have, you have to come to the dispensary, because you have to present your card and your your valid ID that has to be scanned. If you're not able to come, you can assign a caregiver. So somebody can be signed up for you, but then they have to have the card, and they can come get the medicine and deliver it. It can't be mailed. It either has to be given to the patient or the caregiver. The delivery, I didn't speak to this, and we'll speak to this more in zoning, but there are two garage doorways, one in the front of the building and one in the back. And we're going to request all product deliveries be before the place opens, so that there isn't confusion with a delivery van coming in and patients trying to get in the building. So they will come in and pull in the back of the building and come through the garage door. And once they come in, the garage door's closed, and there's a Sally Port, where then that product will be taken out, it'll be counted and inventoried, and then the van, you know, leaves. The van's secured, and the van leaves. So, you know, even the product itself is not going to be seen from the outside. That is not required by the state. In many places, you're going to see that the van will just pull up outside, and they'll walk the product in in a locked bin or something. The public will never see that. And they will not know what this building is. It's not, you know, it's going to be cleaned up and look a little more interesting, but the signage will be obscured on the street, and we'll only have that little sign on the building. And unless you're a patient and have that address and the directions to get there, somebody driving by isn't going to know what the place is.
Interesting, Karen, so you mentioned that you get this card, and that you're only, you've gotten, you're being given three addresses or something. Is there, does the amount that each person's available to purchase vary significantly? Or, I mean, can somebody go in and buy, I don't know how you guys do it, but, you know, a few ounces a week, and another guy can buy twice as much, or...
Well, they're limited by state law to two and a half ounces every two weeks. But the national average in medical states is 12 ounces a year, period. So unless someone has cancer, I mean, that's typically the largest amount that people would use it. We have anticipated a 12-ounce per patient usage per year. Because this is not covered by insurance, it's obviously sort of restricted to how much money they're going to spend on this stuff. So I think that drives part of it. And then, you know, that they may show up 1.2 times per month. Not everybody comes twice a month, so...
So you're expecting a significant amount of customers, then?
We think in the first, well, we think by the end of this year, we could have maybe 400 customers that could come once a month. And then next year, we think we could get up to 1,000 or 1,100. And that's really kind of the tricky thing, you know, is to know how many patients. Right now, the entire state only has 1,600 patients registered. So that's woefully below what they were anticipating. And that's because it's difficult to get neurologists and some of the physicians involved with these big hospitals to write recommendations. So it is not materializing nearly as quickly as they had anticipated.
Okay. Thank you.
Further comments or questions from the council? Then, because they're due to come before the planning commission, there's not necessarily a straw vote necessary, but I believe that's one of the benefits that they're hoping to get from appearing before us. And so therefore, may I ask for a show of hands of folks who would say, "I do not object to this process moving forward as the regular process moved forward last time." There we go. That is a majority in the council.
Thank you.
And so therefore, at this preliminary stage, that's the pulse of the council as it stands.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for taking the time to come out this evening.
You throw your talk.
Certainly. That'll do it for item two on the agenda. As we start with item three, I think I'm going to look at the clock and say I'm going to do a little bit of an unusual step of saying, "I'm going to do a quick introduction here." There are a number of folks in the audience tonight who have patiently sat through and maybe have been interested in the Dominic subject, but that's not why they came. And they have patiently sat through the previous presentation, and maybe it was interesting, but that's not why they came. And so, of course, this is the group of folks that we were talking about last month. This is the group of folks who was here last summer as well. And so, to make it abundantly clear to everybody, the council action taken last month has not been shelved, or set aside, or reversed, or anything else like that. Nobody here tonight is in the position of having to advocate for their street because their street is on this year's list. But in speaking with Mr. Williams and Mr. Lindquist after the meeting, when the subject kind of comes up, "So should we still come in March?", my answer was yes. I suggest that you still come, because the discussion is really about the topic that you folks, I know personally, have been told for the last three years. "Sorry, there's no money for you. Sorry, there's no money for you. Sorry, there's no money for you. Maybe next year, maybe next year, maybe next year." And so, the statement that I made was, you present a stronger case as a disinterested party, saying, "We're not here talking about our own because you guys have taken care of that. We're talking about a larger problem." And people need to see the impacts of the decisions that are made when we don't spend the $1 million on the roads and so forth and so on. So there are two people who are on the sign-in sheet. Mr. Deastis, I know you know how to drive a sign-in sheet as well. So, Mr. Vogt, are you going to be doing this?
It's actually going to be Finance Director Melissa Gallagher.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Ms. Gallagher. Oh, sure, because it's more of a funding-based discussion than...
That is correct.
All right. Fair enough. Then, Mr. Crumstock, do you have an introduction?
No, not really, but the same thing, we told you that we were doing this in steps. We did the first step in February. This is our March discussion, obviously, people, we've had numerous discussions on local roads, and we've changed how we've funded MFT in local roads over the past few years. But again, part of this discussion is really talking about local road funding, which needs some additional resources overall to maintain a program that does numerous streets, not just one street or two streets. But with that, turn it over to Finance Director Melissa Gallagher, who will take you through the presentation.
And Ms. Gallagher, I promise, I mean no offense whatsoever when I tell you the floor is yours and then walk out on you. Mr. Deastis, if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Crumstock. So I'll get started, and thank you, City Council. As we go through this packet, and for those in the audience, we'll kind of summarize and give you information. But what we've done is brought this back as a local road funding discussion. We have Public Works Director Fred Vogt in the audience as well, and he's going to be giving some information. We can start this now, or we could just leave this in the packet, and you can ask questions. But we do have a report from the city engineer. And then we also have some information that Public Works Director Vogt wrote up as well. And we can summarize that at the end, if you'd like. But we first wanted to make sure that we brought this back. We began this discussion process, and we've done this through the budget process as well. But through the July committee, the whole, and also the August committee, the whole last year, we did bring back some local road funding discussions. We continue to bring this back just for information, and then also to highlight some of the issues that are out there. We also wanted to make sure that, as we now move ahead with our capital planning for the next year, we will have our Ad-Hoc Capital Improvement Committee work on these issues as well. But really, it's the city council that will be looking at this and really seeing where we're headed in the next direction. I think it's important that we discuss these things now as we head into the budget planning process. Some of this information is review to the city council, and some of it, we brought back as newer information, as we updated some survey information. In the packet itself, we have brought back some of the information from discussions with the Ad-Hoc Capital Improvement Committee. A lot of this has had to deal with, there is, you know, a process that we need to look at as far as looking at new revenue sources for the local roads that we do repair, maintain, and construct. In our review, we decided to take a look at only what available funding sources that we have year over year to fund the local roads. We do an annual street program every year, and that funding process has been limited over the years by sort of a lack of funding in several areas. Now, one of the things that we did in our analysis is make sure that we took out the grants or the reimbursements, so that we're truly only looking at what we have available. So we did include in the packet some historical background information. We're going to go through an estimated funding gap, some survey information, and then we really want to leave it up to City Council for review and discussion. In the historical background, we did bring this back from July. This is on the packet, but it does tell you for many years, the primary sources of the local road funding for the city of Rolling Meadows. There was a property tax levy at one time, just as we have now. We have state motor fuel tax revenues. We've funded by bonds. There've been federal and state grants, transfers from other funds, and investment earnings. Now, the past several years, there've really been a shift really to just state motor fuel taxes, federal and state grants, vehicle stickers, local motor fuel tax revenues, and Cook County Road and Bridge Tax Levy. We've outlined that in the packet, and you've really seen that in previous council meetings, and we outlined in the packet, so I'm just going to leave that for now. On page four of this document, we did take this at a very broad-based view to show you that there is an estimated funding gap. And when we look at the major road funding sources, we have the state motor fuel tax, which accounts for 37%, which is our state allotment. We've got vehicle stickers, a home road motor fuel tax, and road and bridge taxes. And those are our four primary pieces of the pie. Those bring in about $1.8 million a year. And when we just look at roadway improvements, what we've got as far as expenditures, we have estimated that, you know, when you load in the annual street program, we're not talking grant reimbursements or grant expenditures, but when you load in everything as far as all the expenditures that it takes to improve and construct roads, about $2.6 million in expenditures. And so we're saying that there's an estimated funding gap, if you just broad-based, about $800,000 a year. That is with doing about a $1 million street program every year. Now, the interesting part to all of this, too, is when we look at some of the things that is in the council packet itself as far as local road conditions, there are things that we have now seen from the 1970s and 80s as far as road conditions that we're now seeing as evidence, and now these costs are greater. And so what we're seeing is that if we're going to do a $1 million road funding program or an annual street program, we're going to need to look at other revenue sources. We did mention this in the fourth quarter financials at the February 24th city council meeting. And one of the things that we're trying to bring back is that the general fund and other funds have supported the roads as well. So just taking that thought is where we are as an estimated fund gap. We did do a bit of a survey information, and on page five of the packet, we thought that it would be interesting to look at the national perspective and how do others fund their roads. Many of it is general funds, many, general fund revenues. Many of it is property taxes. Interestingly enough, motor fuel taxes really are not the main support of roads. It might have been years ago, but, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that there really hasn't been an increase in the state allotment since the 1970s or 80s, something...
Late 80s.
Late 80s, yeah. So, I mean, there really hasn't been where the state has kept in pace with where inflation and other things have gone to really support what cities need to do. So, you know, partly, it's, you know, there's a bit of a gap from the state. So when we look at other municipalities, what we did was a broad-based survey. We reached out to municipalities, and a lot of it's in the packet, and I'm just going to summarize just a few things. It's interesting because there's not one type of way roads are funded. And, you know, we reached out, we spoke with folks, we gave them surveys. We had some of this in the council packet from July, but we wanted to bring this back. There have been trying, there have been thoughts where, you know, what can we do? And I think if you look back at some of the news articles, there've been a lot of municipalities bringing this back for discussion. So on page five of the packet, we sort of summarized this. For instance, the Village of Hoffman Estates implemented a few taxes, and electric utility tax, they did a natural gas tax, they did a motor fuel tax, and a package liquor tax. Again, each municipality is different. One tax or revenue source may not be right for one municipality, but we wanted to bring this back to you. There are other ideas as well, but there's really not a lot of new ideas out there. And what do we do in the future, and this is where the city council will move this ahead? Where do you want your road funding sources to go? And where do you think that you're, where you want, in a nutshell, where you want to head for the future? A couple of the things I wanted to mention is that it seems like a lot of folks have started to use the electric utility tax, which ours is deposited into our general fund, and some of folks have used that now for local roads. A lot of people still use vehicle stickers, but a lot of people don't. And we brought that survey back in July. What we did see is a lot of people are now looking to the natural gas tax. It's something that we saw across the board. Some folks will use a general fund transfer. Some people are just, some municipalities are looking ahead and doing some longer-term bond issuance as well. So I wanted to leave that at that. That is in your council packet. But I wanted to just sort of go through and really leave this up to the city council input and direction in planning for future roadway improvements. And again, Public Works Director is here to answer any questions in terms of situation, in terms of the packet itself in the engineering report. A couple of questions that we have, and we wanted to really leave this up for the city council. We've got these outlined here on pages six and seven. One of the questions, and we can, I'm going to outline them, and I wanted to really bring this back for city council direction, but we've been discussing this at the Ad-Hoc Capital Committee. Planning process is, number one, should the city review its outstanding debt and start really planning for potential road projects? Right now, we have still several debt issuances that are on the city property tax levies from 17, for 2017 and 2018. Do we want to start looking and planning for the future in the long term as far as any potential debt issuances? One of the things that we want to take a look at as well is looking out, maybe not just between the next several years, but maybe five, 10 years. That's something to think about. The next item, natural gas tax. Some communities have added this alternative revenue source. Would the city council like to see some data, like in the past, on communities that have this revenue source, and potentially some revenue, basic parameters for that source? Number three, we did discuss earlier that, based on the audited financial results for 2014, which will be presented at the June COW, the local road funding program right now has budgeted $770,000 for 2014, for 2015, sorry. Does the city council still wish to add the additional $230,000, which we have discussed prior to this meeting? And then going forward, and not that we have to discuss all of this tonight, but I think it's something to think about, what type of policy does the city council want to establish with using reserves or having a funding mechanism from the general fund? If that's something that is going to be discussed in the future, there should be some parameters on that. We do, of course, always add a word of caution in looking at using reserves. It's something that you, as a city council, would want to provide some direction in, similar to how you provide a direction in committing funds for uncompensated balances, absences. The last couple of items here, in the past, the city council and many municipalities have a property tax levy for road-specific expenditures. Is that something that the city council wants to review and maybe look at in the future? We have discussed vehicle stickers. We did some streamlining for that for 2015. It has been discussed through the budget discussions, and we did streamlining. Just putting that out there right now as far as vehicle stickers, what has been done. And then also just leaving it is what other sources of, or ideas for local road funding? So I'm going to leave it really for city council discussion and review, and of course, Public Works Director is here for questions as well. Anything for Mr. Crumstock to add?
Thank you, Melissa. First come around? Okay, so we do have a couple of people who have requested to speak, and you will have an opportunity. First, we'll go around and have the council make any comments that they wish to make on the subject. So while everybody's gathering thoughts, I do have a first question. As it relates to our electric utility tax, what... As it relates to our electric utility tax, what amount do we collect at the present time?
Currently, it's about $1.3 million.
And that goes into the general fund?
That is correct.
So, I think Ms. Gallagher had mentioned it at some point in time, but I think moving forward, we probably need a steady source of income to supplement those funds that we're using now. And if memory serves correctly, and correct me, Ms. Gallagher, our general fund balance has exceeded what we have budgeted for the last couple, three years. So, that would make me think that we could take a portion of that 1.3 electric utility tax and use it to help supplement road fundings without having to create new taxes on the residents. But it's just one idea. Like I said, I think we need to, if we want to get to that 2.8, 2.6 number, we need to find another $800,000, but we need to find it regularly. That might be one area. So, we're saying it's coming from the electric tax. We don't have to add a natural gas tax, but it's just one thought. Now, anybody else have thoughts?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few. I would be opposed to a natural gas tax for this purpose in the sense that, in my opinion, natural gases has absolutely zero to do with roads. So, I don't see the correlation between the two. I get it that we can just tax somebody for the purpose of taxing them to do what we want to do, but that just doesn't seem right in my book. You know, I was a fan last year of raising taxes to, partially for this purpose, partially for others. But, and I had a conversation with the city manager today a little bit about it, I would be in favor of a line item on the property tax bill that, you know, whatever the number is, you know, 200, 500, 800, whatever the number comes out to be, because it would fall into the same category as pensions. That if we say we're going to take $2.4 million in pensions, we are obligated to take $2.4 million in pensions and give it to the pensions. If we were to say, we're going to tax, we're going to have a line item of $500,000 for roads, just put local roads, we would be obligated to put that $500,000 in local roads. We don't have the ability to alter that. I do get what you're saying, Mr. DeSantis, about the electric tax, but my caution would be, we've been fortunate the last couple of years, and if we start a policy that says we're going to transfer 250, or 300, or 500, whatever that number might be, and all of a sudden, the general fund gets in trouble because revenues aren't where they are, expenditures are more, then we kind of lock ourselves into a corner because we still have to make that transfer. So, I think a property tax levy would be, you know, a line item. Again, I don't want it to be just something that we can move if we deem appropriate, but that would, we'd be obligated at that point in time. Again, I was a fan of raising the vehicle stickers because, in my opinion, the whole purpose of the vehicle sticker is for the roads. I mean, you know, it's a great tie-in. I don't see a downside to it. I mean, you know, I think these, while nobody wants to raise taxes, while nobody wants, I don't want to pay anymore. But I also look at the streets around and say, okay, what's the lesser of two evils? Do I want to tear my car up? Do I want to have, I mean, anybody that comes in, you know, to purchase property, to start a business, they drive down Kirchhoff, or they drive down some of the auxiliary streets and say, you know, this city's in trouble because the roads are, you know, not in good shape? So, I think, you know, if we went to residents and said, listen, we, you know, we raised taxes $500,000, it's on there, but it's specifically for roads, that's something that's a little bit more palatable than raising taxes $500,000 because we're going to upgrade X, Y, or Z, or purchase X, Y, or Z, or whatever, you know, we might do. I mean, we're obligated at that point in time, just as we are with the vehicle stickers because we've put them in there. I think the only problem with, you know, the gasoline taxes, you know, we have to be cognizant, unfortunately, of what's happening around us. If everybody around us was at 4 cents, we could go to 4 cents. But we can't really go to 5 cents when everybody around us is 2 and have our gas 3 cents higher than everybody else. So, I'm not opposed to raising that one, but that's dictated by the actions of the communities around us. But I don't disagree that we need to have, you know, more funding, but I think that taking and doing, the one-off today, I think, was okay. You know, we're going to transfer 230 in there. But my guess is that S&P Moody's is going to frown dramatically on next year if we decide to willy-nilly send another 230, or 350, or 700, or whatever we just kind of dream up without some coordinated plan that, you know, we're going to do this exactly the same way every single year. So, I think a property tax levy with a line item and, you know, increasing vehicle stickers is two sources that we should be looking at because we got to pay for these roads. It's as simple as that. I mean, you know, we, you know, we put Fairfax in. You know, I know the people on HAWK have complained to me numerous times, and I'm sure everybody's received requests from, you know, their various residents. So, you know, when you look at it and say, okay, we don't have 143 to do HAWK, how many other people didn't have money to do their roads? So, I mean, I think we have to figure something out, which is one of the cases I made last fall about raising the taxes because, you know, we've got these costs that are, continue to explode, and we have no way to pay for them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the council? Rob?
Thank you. I agree with what Mr. Judd said. I think the problem here is we've, you know, we've committed to being aggressive about our streets program. I think as the news has come in, for those of us who thought, wow, we're going to, we're going to be spending more money and therefore we're going to be paving more streets, there's some bad news because it sounds like we'll probably be spending a lot more money and paving less streets because the streets that we're going to be working on are going to cost a lot more than they have in the past. I think it was Alderman Vainbaugh who ended our discussion on the last COW that we talked about streets with, I'm totally in support of all this, now we have to find the money to pay for it. So, I'm not going to be a fan of moving money from anywhere. I totally agree with Alderman Judd. Either it's going to have to be created by more taxing, or at some point, I would be in favor of natural gas tax. In fact, when you say it's not related, I could link it in the context of, well, it's related because we need to drum up more money to pay for streets. So, you know, you can't justify in your mind, a natural gas tax, or an electric utility tax for that matter, going to streets because the two aren't related. But in the context of, we need more money, they're related. So, I suppose we could enact a natural gas tax and say, all monies that come in from this, which would be several hundred thousand dollars, would be dedicated towards our streets. As staff noted, we've had an income stream in the past where we said, we're going to put this on the tax levy and it's going to streets. And so, I think, as Alderman Judd mentioned, that's probably our best bet at this point. We have an $800,000 shortfall, and Alderman Judd mentioned the unpleasant option of adding half a million to the property taxes. My comment would be, that's still $300,000 short of the $800,000 shortfall. So, if we're, if we're going to commit to being aggressive about our roads this year, I would say let's also commit to figuring out where that money is going to come from this year, whether it be a tax increase plus a natural gas utility tax, or whether it's going to be just a large tax increase. And then, the next discussion would be long-term, as Ms. Gallagher pointed out, what are we going to do about this so we won't have this discussion every year? But as of right now, I would say I agree with everything Alderman Judd said, and, you know, he left it at half a million dollars, and I don't even know how to suggest how to make up that extra 300 grand that we're still short on. So, thank you.
Ms. Gallagher, the $800,000 gap that you alluded to, is that for '15 or '16? Or is that moving ahead?
That's just moving ahead. That's a broad-based estimate.
That's not necessary.
It could be as low as 500,000, it could be as high as a million.
But it's not, but it's not for '15?
No.
Okay. So...
We're covered for '15. We're talking possibly '16. We're looking at as a broad-based future estimate.
All right. Well, and just so I want to make it clear, because Mr. Baner, I think, was thinking it was for '15, the way you were saying, so...
No, I'm talking about this conversation we're having moving forward.
Okay. Gotcha. Any other comments on this? Len?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank staff for putting this together. I do agree that I don't want to do anything with a general fund transfer. One, we're just finally repairing it from what had happened. Two, I do believe there's some fund balances that we've been struggling to fully fund, and as Alderman Judd brought up, you know, we don't know what the future brings, and plus, we're, we finally have our bond rating on the way up. I would like to see if we could get consensus tonight to direct staff for a 10-year plan. I mean, right now, we're talking about, you know, just the short, the short term, but I think for us to look at all these, number one, on electronic page nine was, should the city review the outstanding debt and plan to issue debt for road projects? Number two was a natural gas tax. Number four was, or number three was a general fund tax, which I don't agree with, the property tax levy, and vehicle sticker. And what I would suggest is that you take those four that I mentioned and have staff come back to us and say, here's a 10-year plan, this is the option, we can do so much in bonding, so much in natural gas, so much in a property tax, so much in a vehicle sticker, and we're not really hitting one particular area because when it comes on your property taxes, you're there. And I would like, and plus, it would also give us a future where we know that if staff is planning it, we have 10 years, we know what we can accomplish, and we're not really incumbent on just having one fund or one source coming in. So, my thought would be, let's see what staff could come back over 10 years. They're obviously going to have to go talk to engineering, and also going to have to come up with what they believe will be the funding on what they can do because, I agree with Alderman Baner, too, is that, you know, one of the things as I came on the council has been frustrating is people have talked about some of the streets and roads in town, and I realize we're coming off a period where we've had some difficulty with income revenue. But now, if we're going to do this, just as Alderman Judd came up with the suggestion a few years back, that if we're going to do the pensions, you know, short-term, we could just continue to pay a lower amount, but long-term, it's more beneficial to pay more now. And I think it'd be more beneficial to plan this for 10 years and have staff come back with a revenue stream of how we can accomplish it. So, we are not, we're not going through this year in and year out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments from staff? Mike?
Thank you. Melissa, I ask you a quick question, maybe a little naive, but maybe it might be helpful for all of us. Right now, the last two years, we've run a surplus both years, correct, of our budget? So, the money, the money that's left over at the end, does that just go back into the general fund?
Yes.
Is it possible going forward that any of that money could be assigned to a fund, going, say, we expand the road fund from whatever number to another number?
That's one reason why we started with our fund balance policy, so the general fund now has it. So, as long as you're in that period, what I would caution people is, obviously, when Moody's and S&amp;P's looks at any of our budgets, they always look at how many budget amendments you're going to do. So, if you're going to start a policy that says, hey, if you're within your '15 to '30 fund balance, then you need to budget for that money to be, because they just look at it. If you're just starting your own little, every year, we're just doing budget amendments, they frown on that. They want stability, they want the overall look of everything. So, again, yes, that could happen, but we would have to wait, obviously, for the next budget. So, you're off-cyclo what you're trying to do, but again, that would show S&amp;P and Moody's, we're not just every year doing a budget amendment and just throwing money left and right. The other thing that I would also remind anybody listening to this is that we've had a lot of one-time issues, and that's why some of that fund balance has grown. And also, some of that fund balance has also grown because, again, our full chargebacks are not in place at this point in time, too. So, all that goes into the picture, but that's some of the stuff that we look at on staff's side when we're preparing a budget, and also looking at some of those other items.
So, is, so, to follow on with that, then, can we say that maybe, so like this year, if I remember, correct me if I'm wrong on the numbers, we had budgeted 770?
Mm-hmm.
So, could next year, we just budget at 900 upfront?
You can always budget upfront, and you can say that's what you want to budget, and then we can build into the budget. And again, it might show, staff doesn't prefer doing negative budget, so your general fund shows a negative. But again, if you're doing the transfers and you're doing some of the stability, that's what they're also looking at. But again, we can build in some of that with the understanding with the City Council. When you see a budget, which is not our preference, having certain negatives, and we can explain those negatives, it helps. But again, that's what a bunch of those groups are looking for. They're looking for the stability. They just don't want to see, okay, every year, you get your audit, and then you just start transferring left and right.
Okay, thanks. I guess for my opinion is what I'd like to see going forward. I guess I'll attack it a little differently than some of the other people have. You know, two meetings ago, at the end of the meeting, I requested us to have a special meeting because, as a city, we're confronting many major financial issues that we just can't seem to come to a conclusion on. We all agree that we're going to do something with the fire stations, no conclusion's been made yet. We all know we have to do something with the old public works building. We've come to no conclusion yet. But these are major, major expenses. We also know that somewhere probably the next 10 to 15-year period, we're looking at a major expense for the police department for a new building, a new police station. My point being is I think we really have a lot of issues that are all wrapped up in this one, one area, finance. How do we finance all this stuff going forward? Now, we're only talking about streets right now, but we really can't talk about bonding out for streets when we have so many other things we might have to bond out for. So, I guess I would just ask, once again, to at least consider doing either a special meeting or something together with the Finance Committee, and sit down and really hash stuff out how we're going to go forward to fund all of these things that we need. There's no one sitting in this room, whether the people out in the audience or us sitting at this table, want to increase taxes, but we're at the point, the same thing we do in our own homes. We make money, we spend money. If you spend more money than you make, you got to either reduce costs or move. So, I mean, we get, we got to do something to change the dynamics of where we're going. And, you know, a couple of us last year, in the minority, you know, we requested some incremental increases in vehicle stickers and just the real estate taxes, and we were told it wasn't a good time. I don't know if it's a better time now, but, you know, if we did a little bit each year, we'd be in a better shape. And to do nothing sure hasn't helped us right now. So, I guess going forward, I'd like to look at at least a small increase in taxes, a small increase in vehicle stickers, at least keep up with inflation at minimum. But to do nothing, in my opinion, is foolish because it doesn't get us anywhere. It just makes us farther in the hole. And none of these issues are going to go away by us ignoring them. So, again, I would just ask us to consider all these things because I think it's more than just street funding. I think that's a big issue, and I'm not trying to sidestep it as an issue, but I think it's just one of the issues and one of the major things. We just haven't addressed the financial aspects of what we're looking at, and I think we really got to look at that as a town. The other thing I would just offer is a last thought. Living in the state of Illinois has been a really difficult thing, and it's going to get more difficult from a taxing standpoint. We are not going to get more money from the state. We're probably going to get less, maybe a lot less. So, we have to keep that in mind also, that we need to be really cautious going forward with any increase in anything because we're not going to have more money next year than we have this year. So, thanks for listening.
Thanks, Mike. I have some further comments, but other people hasn't talked yet. So, anyone else? Tim?
Just a quick one. I just heard what you said, Mike. Alderman, I can, thank you. The roads are an item that should be in the budget that we do every year. I recognize the difference between we're going to spend a lot of money on a fire station, we'll spend money on a public works building, we'll spend money on a building at some point in time that they're large expenditures, and I get that. Roads never go away. Roads go bad every year. We've got to put a, like a separate budget item that we have money available for roads for every year. for, for every year. And what I'd like to start with, and Fred, you probably have the numbers, I'm not going to ask for them now, but you have a pretty good idea what, what our city needs on a, on a yearly basis. I'll say, to catch up, let alone keep up, you know what I mean? So what is that bogey number? You would have to tell us now. Maybe you know it. Do you know it? Is it 1 million or 1.2, 3, 4, 5, 2? And whatever that number is, whether it's catch up or, or keep up, is the, that's what we kind of need to budget for and find a way to get, get money on a, on a yearly basis and do it, so we don't steal back and forth.
I recall that the numbers were five years ago and 10 years ago, when we last did our street condition surveys. I would request consideration strongly of one of the efforts that staff would make. If council wants us to pursue that, would be to update that street condition survey and work with, between public works and the city engineer on that and get you some updated numbers. And it, as I recall, it was roughly a million to a million five per year several years ago, when we last, when we last did that, given what our street conditions were five, six, seven years ago, given that we've underfunded to a certain extent from those needs. Would like to update that rather than just use those old numbers.
Is that before or after we, we bonded out that money to the streets?
Last street condition study was done in late 2009, early 2010, as I recall.
And?
That was, and the bond issue was 2006, 2007 construction.
Okay. Tim?
So I guess that's what we do here, right? We can ask you to do that? Is that how it works? I mean, can we, can we request that?
You can request that, and then we can talk to our engineers, but again, that will take some additional time and...
Get that?
Yes. And again, we can try working it into the budget, because I have to get a, a number from our engineers what that's going to cost.
So where I'm going for this is, I'd like to see, like, whatever that target number is every year, and then that's what the number we're trying to hit by whatever revenue stream we're trying to do. Because, I mean, is at one point, I would just like to know what that is, and how far out did you go, Fred? Was it?
It was 10 years.
It was 10 years? Okay, then, if that's okay. Do the same thing, and don't, don't spend the rest of your life working on it, you know? But give us... Plus or minus $100,000 or whatever it is, you know, 10, 20%.
The study structure is in place. It'd simply be a matter of reinspection and adjusting for 2015 costs, or kind of project out into the future. There's a number of different ways to go about it.
So I think that would help with the road part, at least.
And I would also give the caveat that Fred and I have talked about numerous times, or remember, it's an estimate. Until we do the soil borings and everything else with some of these new roads that we're getting with the pavement underneath, it's costing a little bit more.
I get that. And the key to this whole program is, every year, you've got to reevaluate, okay? And that goes with the plan, right?
Mm-hmm.
So every year, you just reevaluate based on what conditions, what you know of.
Yep.
And, you know, it might be up or down, I don't know.
It's never been down, but...
Okay, we can hope, Tim.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, so we've had a lot of different ideas out here. And I, you know, I don't see any one major idea that, that stands out, so I'm going to throw another one out, okay? I do not want to raise property taxes for anybody, okay? I think we play plenty of property taxes now. Now, that being said, we've also heard, transfer money from the general fund, don't transfer money from the general fund, assign money from the general fund. So we've heard that, too. So I guess, I would look at lowering the electric utility tax that we currently have, and adding a property tax levy for the amount that we lower it. So the net to the people is zero. It gives the residents an opportunity to write off that part of the property tax. There's no transfer from the general fund. The net difference to the folks, to our residents is zero. And as long as we're in the green, as we have been for the last couple of years, we can keep going like that. So that's just another suggestion. I know we did have one suggestion on, on having staff do a 10-year plan. I think that's what they've asked us here, is what do we want to spend? Where do we want to spend? Well, how do we want to do it? And, and I don't think we've gotten to that point yet. I would ask if council wants to, just nod your head, should we have Fred put together what the number is for the roads? I think that makes a lot of sense, that we get a number there. So just, do I see all, everybody nodding yes for that?
Yep.
Okay, so you've got some direction. Let's get, let's get a number, because obviously, we need a number to start with. And then, I think there's, I don't know what more we can do at this point, but I think we need the number first, because Melissa's given us a number of 800,000 for the next, is the gap for the next budget year. We're not doing budget yet, and I think we've got some time before we make these, all these final decisions. And, you know, there's a lot to think about. Do we, do we, you know, increase utility tax, natural gas tax? Do we just transfer money? Do we not transfer money? Raise taxes on property tax? There, there's a lot here, and I, one person, like I said, my first thought was what I said, but I'd like some time to, to kind of hash this out in my brain before I come up and say, I'm willing to make a decision on what we're going to spend money on, as it relates to roads. So that's my two cents on the thing. Any other council members here? Len?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want clarification. What I had asked for, and I think we're all along the same line, is we're asking Fred for information, but for us to put a program together, we're, we're asking him for 10 years down the road. In other words, he gave us some ideas. But in other words, oh, so that we're not, so that we can come up with a constructive idea of funding, is have him come back and say, it's going to take X amount of money for 10 years, so that we know what we're doing year in and year out, we're not coming back. And then, once he's come up with that, then staff, then we can ask staff where, what sources of revenue we can get. Is that where we're headed?
I think we get the number from them, and I think they've given us ideas of where the sources come from. And I think we need to find out from Fred what the number is, and then we can say, okay, Melissa's given us a general number of 800,000 as the gap, and, and Fred's just going to verify that number essentially. Fred?
Well, if, if I could, when we do a street condition report, I would expect that, as is in the past, there will be different strategies identified. So it will be a little bit more than just coming back and saying, here's what we need, because when we get into looking at pavement conditions, whether they are totally in need of a reconstruction now, or partially, and the timing that you do them, it will be a bit more complex. I just wanted to forewarn you than just coming up with, here's...
It's a million bucks a year, a million and a half a year. Understood.
So that's what we can produce.
And, and also, if I can add, the 800,000 is a funding gap. So we're talking about the available resources, and then your expenditures were estimated 2.6 million. So what I'm saying is, there is a funding gap. So I think the plan that's sort of being described is a very solid one, to really bring back that road condition report and look at that, and then we can go from there. But I think that's a great starting point.
Okay, so are, are we all in agreement that we're going to get some further information and go from there?
Real quick, as we're heading there, when they're taking it to the point of where we're going to find money, at some point, have we talked about how there should be a fund balance in the, in the roads fund? A lot of the local cities have a big bag of money there, and they pull from that. We don't and haven't.
We don't have enough money in that. And actually, the general fund floats local fund right now. And actually, in the past, between general fund, when it was not solvent, the utility fund actually kept that. And part of that, also, remember that, and as we've always talked about, when we have money in a fund and we feel comfortable with it, that's when we would initially do some of the fund balance policies. That's why we only have one fund balance policy currently for the general fund, our largest. And that's also what we've talked with all the Moody's and S&amp;P and all the financial groups, so they would understand why we haven't done it. And again, there's different philosophies when you do one or not, but again, with how money comes in, even from state and federal grants that we get, there's not enough money in that fund that it's really dependent on other ones to keep it float and make sure that we pay our bills, and we're a good steward of the money until it actually comes. So when we do look at that depreciated amount, we're well aware of that. But that one does not have, utilities do not have, the only one that we currently have passed is the general fund.
Okay, so possibly when we're heading from point A to point B, one of the options will be, or one of the suggestions I would expect would be, it would be normal to have a fund balance, and here's what it, here's what the min-max would be. I'd be interested in that as well. Thanks.
Got it. Okay, anybody else have any comments right now? Brett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I, I agree with what, where we're kind of headed, but I disagree as well, in the sense that I agree we need to get a more formalized number from Fred. But ultimately, you know, let's say it takes him two months, we're going to be basically sitting here in June at, at the same point. If he comes up and says it's, it's a million, or he says it's a million three, or he says it's a million, or it's 800, whatever, we're going to be right back saying, okay, here's the six things.
I'm sorry.
You know, here's the six things. So I, I think what would be helpful is to give a little bit of direction as to where people will kind of stand. In other words, if nobody wants a general fund transfer, I'm not saying they do or don't, but if, if everybody's kind of like, let's not do that, just on the face of it, that gives the staff a little bit of direction, so they can come back and say, listen, we need, you know, a million dollars, and we think this is the best way to do it. We would raise vehicle stickers, we would raise property tax, and we'd raise natural gas tax. At least then, you've got some consensus. I mean, if, if there's three or four or five people, I shouldn't say three or four, four or five people that say, I'm not going to vote for a natural gas tax increase no matter what, we need, I think it would be helpful for the staff to take that off the table now, and say, whether the number's 800, a million, a million three, if it comes back, it's a million six, we might say, we don't have a choice. But at least, then they've got kind of a little bit of direction to where they can kind of put together, you know, okay, well, we'll transfer 250 out of the general fund, or we're going to do no transfer. We got to come up with something. But they've given us really the only options that we have, except for number six, which is, what other options do we have? So if we don't bond it out, we've only really got four options: natural gas, transfer from the fund, property tax, and vehicle stickers. So I think it might be helpful to the staff to say, okay, you'll get the number, but then, as you get this number, kind of help us with where, based on what kind of the, the straw poll at that point in time is, is if they don't, can't do a natural gas, it makes no sense for them to waste any time saying, a natural gas would be X, if you already know you got four votes against it. Or a property taxes would be this, if you already have four votes against it. I mean, it might be helpful just to kind of move the process forward for them, to kind of know what we think, and, and say, you know, because like, I'm not, I'm not opposed to bonding out, but I think Alderman Cannon brings up a great point. You've got public works, and you've got fire, and you've got stuff, you're already going to use up a bunch of our bonding potent, I shouldn't say potential, because we can bond whatever we want, but, you know, we're already going to put out a bunch of bonds already. So, yeah, we could do that, but I'd rather get the other things bonded out first, you know, at this point in time. That's just my food for thought. I mean, whatever, kind of go from there. Thanks.
Okay. Well, I think there are a ton of ways and a ton of questions we can ask. It's not just the five that are on here. And I would, my personal opinion is, I'd have to get a number before we start talking about it, because I don't, I don't know if we can get all the questions asked and answered. I mean, we can try. So, go ahead. Len?
Thank you. I would agree, but a quick question for Fred. We're talking about the cost for this. Can you give a time estimate of how long before you get back to council? For, if we're looking at, say, a 10-year and updating what you had, because you said you already have something in place. So you're just, you're not starting from scratch. You're, you have something set in place.
If we move forward immediately, I would estimate it would be 60 to 90 days to provide that update and bring our report back to council. May or June, in all likelihood.
Thank you, but I, I still agree with Mr. DeJesus, that let's find out what the number is and move, then move forward, because there are so many, we could spend days trying to come up with it. We spend days trying to figure it out, so.
All right, so, and I know I've got some people on the list who want to say something, so I want to get to them, and I don't want everybody here. So let us, let's think on that for a second. We'll come back to that. So I'd like to, thank you, Fred and Melissa. I'd like to get a few people up here who have signed in, who wanted to talk. Let's see, you've completed, you fill out the form, keep your comments to five minutes. Questions and comments are limited to city business. Comments must be directed to council as a whole through myself at this point in time. Discussion must take place in a professional manner, which displays mutual respect, which I'm sure will, and you may not be profane in any form or manner. So I've got two people who have, who have asked to step up and talk. Watch your language. And the first person is Rob Williams. If you'll come up.
As you know, from a month ago, we're with Fairfax Village. One thing I, I might just, just lighten things up a little bit, since the St. Patty's Day, there was a quote in the Herald today, from William Yates, commenting about one of his friends, and he says, being Irish has had an abiding, he has an abiding sense of tragedy, which sustained him through temporary periods of joy. I know a few people like that myself, and occasionally, I'm that way a little bit, but our primary question, as, as Fairfax, is, can we count on our streets being done this year? Or are there still financial concerns that need to be addressed before that can be taken care of? We face as a, an organization...
I can answer that question for you.
Sure.
At the, at the council meeting on the 10th, the city council was presented with several options. One of the options included having the streets at Fairfax done in this year's...
Program?
Program, thank you, good word. And a majority of the council voted that Fairfax would have their streets done this year.
Well, then, on behalf of Fairfax Village and all of its residents, we thank you, and we appreciate your listening to us and putting up with us for, lo, the, the last three years. One thing I would like to personally add here, that as an association, we just went through what you have asked Fred to do. With our entire organization, we did a 15-year plan. We had, we hired consultants and everything else to go out and put together a 15-year plan, so that we would know the number that we're going to have to face. And, and one of the things we're going to be doing in May at our annual meeting is going through the various different ways that we can meet that number, and what you are, are in the process of doing. But where we can meet that number, how we can make our organization secure financially and everything else, as far out into the future as we can reasonably project. But I don't envy you. As the president of the association, I'm not looking forward necessarily to, to finding a way down this path, but I think your attack at, A, get the number, and then B, let's figure out how we can do it, is the best way to go at this particular moment. I, I thank you very much. I thank you very much, and I, we appreciate everything that you folks have done to try and help us out.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. My next speaker was Roland, I'm going to butcher your last name, so...
Lingquist.
It's Robert.
Lingquist?
Lingquist.
Lingquist, okay.
Actually, let me just under, explain why all of the people from Fairfax Village are here. It was because after the committee of the whole meeting last month, we sent out an update and asked that, please set aside this date, because we understood this to be the final prioritization date. With, with the wording that read, after the five to two vote, that read, now before you yell yippee, the March meeting will be the final priority setting, and as many as possible of us should be at that meeting. Mark your calendars, March 17th, 7:30, City Hall. Please plan on attending. It will be either an opportunity to say thank you to the mayor, our alderman, and the city council, or, well, let's not speculate on the rest of it. And the reason that we sent that out was that we heard at the last meeting here that we tend to come when we are squeaky wheels, and we wanted to make sure that this gossbody recognized that we appreciate when you do something right, as you already heard the applause from our group. And so we thank you for that. Just one other piece that I personally want to talk about is in that, in that amendment that is with the funding, it talks about doing repair to streets that are not, that their useful life has gone away. Please be careful, because our streets, the useful lives have gone away. And if we were to be put in that category in future years, we would not be being repaired. And that makes no sense. It's like saying, well, you're already drowning in the swimming pool. As soon as we build a fence around the city, maybe we'll get back to you, and hopefully you haven't drowned by that time. And so be careful about that, as just as a word. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out, and, 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 folks, before y'all leave, I'm sure Mayor Rooney would thank you all for coming out and showing us how concerned you are. So, I'm going to ask y'all a favor. You've heard a lot of the comments that we've had today, and you can probably go on your computers at home and see all the different funding sources for roads, okay? And since you are so involved, Tim is your alderman, and he represents you. And you can find his email address and phone number on, on the city's webpage. But I'd like for y'all to get back to Mr. Veenboss and tell him, moving ahead, okay, it's just a little survey, it's an impromptu survey, would you, A, say the city get more debt, which translates into property taxes, natural gas, electric gas, tax, city stickers, read what we've got, and just an informal thing, just shoot him a note of the top one or two things that you would say is okay to help fund making sure that your roads and all of our roads stay good in the future. I mean, there's probably 100 of you or 60 of you out here right now, just let Tim know, shoot him an email, you don't have to call him and give him a 10-minute, call him personally, no. You don't have to give him a 10-minute dissertation, just, we'd just like to hear from you, because you're so involved. So it's just, I'm just asking, on behalf of Tim. Go ahead, Tim, go ahead.
They have my telephone number and email, I can guarantee you that. And no, I'm all for that, and I would love to hear what you have to, have to say, and we can certainly talk about it in person, whatever you like.
If anybody wants to see what they were talking about tonight, you can go to the Rolling Meadows site and go to the committee of the whole March 17th meeting, and go through, go to the third item, local road fund analysis. In there, they outline all of the various different ways that they currently fund the program, and you can add whatever you want to, if you have any questions about how they're funded now.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
I just, before, before these people leave, I'd just like to make, make sure we're on the same page. I don't think we've guaranteed Fairfax is getting done. I think what we guaranteed was there was a million dollars that we're going to do, and we're going to put that in there to do. But once the numbers come back is when the final decision's made. In other words, if Newport costs 700,000 to do, and Fairfax costs 600,000 to do, that's 1.3, we don't have the funding. I think that, I don't think we've guaranteed that they're, that that's being done.
I think we voted that we were taking care of that this year.
No, we're going to put that in, so that we're going to get the bids on it, and once the bids come through, that's when we'll be able to say, yes, we can do it. That's the, that's the plan to do it. But if Newport and the other ones come in, and it's 1.3 million, we haven't funded 1.3 million, we funded a million. We said, this is, this is the scenario we want to do, we want to do Newport, and I forget the other, it was two roads, I think, and Fairfax. So we said, these are going to come up to, I think it was 960,000. As long as the bids come in at 960, and we say that that's what it is, then yes, you're 100% correct that we will do their road. But if the bids and everything come in at 1.2, there's no guarantee. And that's what, I just want to make sure that they're not misled, at least that's what my understanding of it was, is that we proved that, yes, we're going to go with scenario one, which included Fairfax, on the basis it's going to be 960. And then, once we get the numbers back, Fred, you can help me with this, is that...
You're correct.
Is that, is that correct?
That if it comes in at 1.2, then maybe they won't. And I just don't want them to get a misimpression that, yes, you're 100% getting done, it's 90, it's probably a 90% chance, but in the event it comes up much higher, then we can't guarantee it, is all I'm saying. Am I correct, Fred?
Where we are right now, to answer the question, is we, the city engineer and Public Works are still finalizing the bid package. We are anticipating that within the next two to three weeks, we will have the street program with the streets included as directed by the council last month on that. We are targeting a mid-April bid letting and opening the bids. Our target at this point is to bring that April 28th to the city council for award in whatever the streets are that are included based on the prices. Certainly, again, given the council's direction, the streets that were approved will be what we anticipate and hope to do, unless the prices, you know, are so out of kilter that we would have to look at eliminating or deferring, I should say, one of, or more of the streets. We won't know that until we get the bid results in mid-April, and that is a city council action that would take place to award a contract. That's where we are right now.
Okay.
Right, so I just want to make sure that they're aware of that. The odds are it's going to be okay, but just, there's no guarantee.
All right, so, so, everyone has heard that, your streets are scheduled, and it's based on what the final bids are. So, so long as the final bids come in at where Public Works has projected, we'll be fine. If all the streets come in way over, we'll have to reevaluate it in April. But right now, you're scheduled to get them done.
May I then, may I have pass around some photographs?
Sure.
That I took yesterday. And let's just call those photographs your sidewalks and our sidewalks. And as you get, as you go through the process, please remember those.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, at this point in time, it's 9:30, let's take a 10-minute recess. Yeah.
He used me, trust me.
Brad, thanks. No, thank you, I, I thought it was a done deal, I, but, it's way, right. May not be.
I pressed the button.
Okay, we are, we are back in session and we're moving on to number four, which is bidding. And I guess Fred, we're gonna turn over the microphone to you.
Thank you. The report that staff provided was in regards to questions that were asked to provide this information with regards to bidding, when we bid, when we waive bids, when we use written proposals. And just to be brief with regards to what's in the report, generally for projects over $20,000 in values, when we, we will bid services, materials, commodities, equipment, there are times when, over the years, staff has asked and councils approved waivers of this. Many times it's for single source items or things that are proprietary such as water meters, our pavement preservatives that generally are single sourced, road salty icing materials that we have specifications on that are fairly limited, our water system leak detection, which is a vendor that has all of our information from previous annual studies within their files and it is certainly cost effective to continue that relationship with a specific contractor. Fireworks, for example, and other things that we have found over the years to not be advantaged, advantageous to bid because of the limited interest or limited ability for vendors to meet certain product and performance specifications. Some of, and I'm just talking about public works projects here from my familiarity and experience. Specialized equipment, when we put specifications together for things like backhoe loaders, sewer flushing equipment and the like, generally provides limited abilities to get competitive bids because there are limited products out there. We just went through that and one of the reasons I'm here with regards to the questions about the efforts for the fire engine that was just recently specified and, and approved a couple of months ago. Engineering and Architect Services, there's state procedures that are in writing that require what we call for requests for qualifications, requests for proposals. Oftentimes we limit that to just requests for proposals because we've had relationships with a number of engineering consultants and know what work they do and rather than having to go through the process of looking for qualifications, we already know who's qualified and we'll get proposals for three to five companies on large projects and go through that effort. That's not a bidding process but professional services opportunity to get the services done in that respect. Generally over the years, we don't lock ourselves into accepting just low bid as a low bid, but refer to it as lowest responsible bid or best bid when taking all considerations into account with regards to the qualifications of the bidder when we look at services. And again, a lot of that's based on experience, based on references that we either are aware of contractor performance abilities or learn that from, from the references that they're required to provide. We also, whenever possible and whenever the pricing is to our advantage, we'll use the Northwest Municipal Conference or the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative, the state pricing, which in essence is they're going through a bidding prices or obtaining qualified proposals in order to meet that competitive need with regards to equipment and services over $20,000. We also just point out that for things that are not at large costs, sometimes the process of formal bidding, because of its additional cost, not only to run the ad, to put together more detailed specifications, the time that it takes, which may or may not produce qualified contractors is sometimes reasons on smaller contracts why we request waivers for bids and seek proposals rather than formal bids. Last thing to just point out is that from time to time there are equipment seek, you know, seeking that doesn't mean a single bid is just non-competitive. A lot of times, you know, we will send out specifications or notice specifically to contractors that we know of, but they choose to not bid because of either their scheduling or their lack of interest due to not being able to meet specifications, but certainly it's not to be considered as a non-competitive situation, only that from time to time, we only get one bid. And time to time, we may not get any bids for things and then have to go through that whole process, but it's just an overview of what we've done with regards to the different ways to procure materials, services and equipment.
Thank you Fred. Any comments from the council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, part of this is brought up because of, you know, I wanted to look into it a little bit more and, and here's, I guess where part of my frustration is, is the city of Raleigh Meadows, at least from what I can tell, doesn't have any super complex issues in the sense that we take, take for example, the fire engine that we purchased. You know, one of the comments I think was made that, you know, well, you know, we need to have this life equipment on it and, you know, whatever, the jaws of life, whatever we have to have. But I don't know how that's different than Lake in the Hills or different than Buffalo Grove or different than Lake Zurich. You know, and in other words, you know, we don't have a nuclear power plant here that would require some, you know, really technical specialized cleaning or, you know, we have to have hazmat and stuff like that. So when it comes to purchasing a fire truck, you know, my opinion is that if we look and put out the specs and we get one bid back, we say, okay, either we tighten the specs down too far or whatever the case may be. We have to be able to use the same equipment that another company, you know, another municipality uses. And even when it comes to, you know, I mean, I know we talked about the garbage truck and the one you purchased, not the last time or maybe the time before, but, you know, a couple of times ago, you know, there were some trips made up to Wisconsin to, you know, to check it out and whatnot and we really don't have this specialized entity of a situation where we have to have all of this specialized equipment for things that we do. We might want those things and you might be able to say and, and bring forward an argument that we, we haven't been able to do this in the past, you know, whatever the case might be. I think the backhoe, you mentioned that, you know, you've got it, so now it goes sideways. And, you know, it makes it so that you can save a bunch of time or that you can do certain things. And I guess one of the things that would be helpful is, you know, if there is a special case like that, that, you know, if we have to spend an extra $50,000 on some piece of equipment and it's brought up and said, okay, well, but if we spend this extra 50 grand, we won't have to hire out this contractor at a cost of $5,000 and in the course of a year and a half, it's gonna pay for itself. That makes it much more pliable and, you know, to swallow because there are times that that would make sense. But when it came to the fire truck, I mean, it's no different than what Lake in the Hills has to a certain degree. They're, they're going to have the same issues that we have, they have to have carry water, they have to go to accidents. You know, to get that there's only one thing, I mean, it's 650K that we spent on the thing. If, if our specs are too tight that we can't get another place to do, then we need to consider, at least in my opinion, I think we need to consider getting, to loosening our specs to where we say, okay, we got three bids now, but as you mentioned, you know, the best bid in our opinion is this because of these reasons, you know, then, then we can at least analyze it a little bit better as a council versus just coming up and here you go, here's one bid, you know, you gotta spend 650K. And, you know, I'm not a fan of purchasing, you know, from foreign countries if we don't have to, but if Japan's making the best fire truck, then we have to buy Japanese fire truck or, you know, a German fire truck or whatever. I could care less. I mean, the bottom line is it's gotta be what's best for the residents. And if we just say, well, there's only four makers and so and so found out Pierce is bidding, so they just walked away. Okay, well, how does Montreal get their trucks? They gotta be buying their fire trucks from somewhere. So there's gotta be other people in the world that make fire trucks and, and, you know, if the cost is prohibitive to get it here, so be it. To me, it's just, you know, I don't see this, you know, we don't have an airport, so we're not gonna have to have, do something that, you know, deals with small aircraft or just, you know, you can go on to a variety of things. It just seems to me like we're just your basic, normal municipality of the north of suburbs and what we're gonna need is pretty much what most of the other suburbs around us are gonna need. So to hear that it needs to be this specialized thing that we've basically kicked everybody else out of the bidding process, just gets frustrating when we have to spend big dollars. I mean, if it's $16,000 because, you know, you know, nobody wants to touch us, you can make the argument it's too small, that nobody, you know, you try to get a mortgage for $50,000, nobody cares. Nobody wants to give it to you because they can't make any money on it and it costs more than it's worth. But if you wanted to get a mortgage for 400,000, no problem, you've got 30 people that'll do it. So it's just, to me, it seems that, I think at times, I'm concerned that we're clamping down on the quote unquote specs too much, that we're ultimately forcing people out of the bidding process. And since we don't have a specialized community, I don't know why we would do that. And so I would like to, you know, throw that in the process that if you only get back one, figure out what it's gonna take to get two or three. You know, if it has to be a Japanese fire truck, it has to be a Japanese fire truck, so be it. If it does everything you want it to do and it's $50,000 cheaper than Pierce, then we have to spend the money. I, you know, I hate to give that business to a foreign country, but the residents need the best potential price that they can get. This is kind of what my thought process is in the whole thing. And I just, you know, stemmed from the fire truck, just getting one and I was sitting up there thinking, what specialized thing on this truck can be any different than what Palatine might need or Lake Zurich or Buffalo Grove? So that's kind of where my frustration came in and, you know, I think, and I don't know if we have to do it, that, I don't know if we come back and say, okay, anything over 100K has to have two or three bids. And even if the guy comes in, he's 700, at least you know and you can make the argument. Like you said in here, you know, there's people that don't even know people are bidding. How the other company knew Pierce was bidding for it is beyond me. We're not supposed to be telling anybody that. So that's kind of where my thinking is, is just, you know, in an effort to reduce the cost for the residents, I mean, you know, we've heard from the conversations earlier that that's just the way I think we can do it, you know, so, thank you.
One.
My only comment and I, you know, I agree with Alderman Judd in the fact that, you know, we wanna get the best bang for our dollar for the residents, but being on the Vehicle Replacement Committee and granted I am a newer member of it in regard to the, and we'll use the fire engine brought up, is that there was ample documentation. We had a meeting, we sat down, we, we looked at it, I forget if there was 50 or 100 pages, chief, and we had people working on it. And I understand the frustration of wanting to get more bids because it's gonna be more competitive, but then again, it goes to what you mentioned, what's best for the residents. And I look at short term versus long term and many times when our staff is ordering a product, they're ordering it for a 10-year or 15-year or 20-year product. So I agree with Brad that, you know, we wanna get the best bang for the buck. However, I think there are times that when we go through the process and we present it to you, I think that is the best that we have to offer and they're taking into effect that, yes, we are a small community, we have 25,000 residents and we have a limited manpower, so we have to do the most with what we have when they roll up into a scene. And if they change the specs and they happen to roll into a scene one time and, well, we changed the specs and we don't have something that we should have had, but it got, but it cost us less money, I really don't wanna take that chance for the residents. So, thank you.
Any other comments?
I see no comments, but I will make one comment is that, and I'm not gonna pick on any one department or vehicle or equipment, but I do agree with what Brad said is that if we put out an RFP and we only get one bid back, I want, I would ask that staff challenge themselves to say, is it too restrictive and that's why we only got one bid back? Okay? Did we write it so that only one bidder can bid? Okay? If you come back and to yourself and say, yeah, that's how we kinda wrote it, then we wrote it wrong. We shouldn't be writing it so that only one person can respond, whatever the RFP is. Okay? And for whatever department and for whatever, whatever it is, if we write it too tight, then we're doing an injustice to ourselves. So, that being said, anything else Fred?
Just to point out just a little history from the public works perspective, and I certainly can't speak to the fire department, for example, they do have an apparatus committee that spends a lot of time and effort putting those specifications together. They know what their, their needs are, but we did have experience a number of years ago with regards to specialty equipment and loaders where we were having difficulty getting competitive multiple bids. So we did loosen up our specs and yes, we did bid out backhoe loaders and got several bids. The bids were pretty much, you know, of a considerable range and also of a considerable ability in terms of what the equipment could do for us. And we did go through that effort and find that, yes, the low bid or maybe in one case the lowest priced two or three pieces of equipment and vendors didn't really meet our needs. But yes, we can open specifications in many places and to be able to get additional bids, it's just, it'll be more work for us and sometimes it's frustrating for some of those vendors out there that they provide their product, but the product may not meet our needs, whether it's articulating loaders or other types of things depending on our operations. So I take all of those comments to heart in terms of what we try to do and we do assess that in terms of trying to not limit to just one particular piece of equipment where it's not competitive.
Okay. Thank you Fred. Okay, let's move on to item number five, the Employee Advisory Committee. And I guess Fred, that's you again, so with further ado, you can use the mic again.
Start with me and I'll ask for Melissa's assistance if anything gets technical with regards to the work and the computations that her and her staff did continually in putting these reports together. Back at the February Committee of the Hole, the Employee Advisory Committee presented a recommendation with regards to longevity, which was not accepted at that time by the Committee of the Hole and the Advisory Committee was directed to go back to examine and look at the longevity schedule again. The committee and the Finance Department did this and particularly on page three of the report tonight is what I'll be referring to in terms of the proposal from February, the computations that were done with regards to moving to a flat rate. What staff did was go back to the 2000 What staff did was go back to the 2005 longevity schedule that the city had, which was the year prior to moving to the percentage rate. We took those numbers from 2005 and adjusted them by what the Consumer Price Index was over the years since then, came up with a schedule that refers to 10 years of service as $1,700, 15 years of service at $1,800, 20 years of service at $1,925, and 25 years of service at $2,050. And just in comparison to what our current longevity total costs of just under $80,000, or perhaps just over, depending on the year when we look back at the records, this schedule would cost about $60,000. Given that that is a flat rate, and establishing it at one time, as a snapshot in time, the Employee Advisory Committee had discussions on this, and felt that we should look to the future with regards to the likelihood that it wouldn't be adjusted, and our proposal of the Employee Advisory Committee is that the longevity rate, if it's going to be moved from a percentage base to a flat rate, be established at the following, which is 10 to 15 years of service would be $1,750, from 15 years of service to 20 years would be $2,000, from 20 to 25 years would be $2,250, and anything 25 years and over would be $2,500. Our costs, again, just at a snapshot in time using 2013 data, would be a $67,000 cost on an annual basis, which is still roughly $10,000 to $15,000 under what the percentage based is. So that being the first recommendation of the Employee Advisory Committee, would you like me to go through the vacation and sick leave, or stop with longevity?
No, why don't we, why don't we have a discussion on each one and try to settle each one individually? So, with that being said, comments from the council on this? Rob?
Thank you. Excuse me. We had, we had made this proposal without a target in mind. My, I guess my preference would be just to accept what they came forward, since we didn't give any direction. The one direction we did give was, the initial amounts they brought back seemed a bit on the high end. This is, now Fred, we're not putting any sort of multiplier in there for gaining year-over-year, are we?
No, there was nothing built into there, other than recognizing that this probably wasn't something that council wanted to consider adjusting year-to-year, or even every couple of years, that once it's established, we would expect that it would be in place for several years. That's certainly up to the council, but that was our anticipation, or our plan was to look so that it would be in place for a while.
Okay, thank you.
Comments or questions, anyone else? One?
I will agree with Alderman Banger, I mean, we did not really give, they came back the first time, we didn't like what they did, we told them to sharpen their pencils and come back, and this is the recommendation, so I would support going forward with this.
Fred?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wouldn't mind, I kinda like to see it a smidge lower, but actually, more so even on the front end, I mean, if you go back to where it was in '05, you know, the difference between 10 years and 25 years is 350 bucks. I mean, that's, you know, for say, on one hand, we're saying there's industrial knowledge, and then we turn around and say, okay, but if you're here for another 15 years, it's only worth 350. So, I mean, I would be more inclined to, you know, maybe adjust the 10-year and the 15-year down, and the 20 down a smidge, and then leave 25 where it is, you know, or something along those lines, if they have to be at a, if we wanna keep them at that straight $250 a year. The other question I would, I would throw out there is, is, you know, as compared to 10 years, you get X, you know, do we maybe come up with a number on a per-year basis? So instead of saying, you know, 10 years, you know, from 10 to 15, you only get 1750, if we did, whatever, you know, if the number's $100 a year, then it would be, you know, year 10, you'd get 100, year 11, you'd get 1,100, 12, and blah, 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 so essentially, you'd be a little bit different than what you have. Just a thought, I don't know if anybody has any interest in that or not, but, you know, I think we're a lot closer than we were before, I think it should be down a smidge lower. But that's, that's my opinion, and if anybody has interest in just a yearly thing, I know, like, I think Mount Prospect does it that way, but I don't know what the council's feeling is, is compared to trying to pick a number for each level, if we just picked the dollar amount and said, you know, obviously, we'd have to have an agreement on the dollar amount, but if it's $60 or $100, whatever that dollar amount is, it would just be from year 10 to cap it at year 30, and whatever you get from year 30 on, that's, you know, that's what, if it ends up being 2,500, it's 2,500 from year 30 on, or whatever the numbers might be. Just a thought, if anybody wants to entertain that versus trying to pick four numbers.
Okay, does anyone want to pursue that line of discussion? What Brad just said? Okay?
Pursue it.
I think it's a good idea, just because I think if we're really looking to have employees stay and reward them, I think every year you stay, you get a little bit more that way. I think it's true reward each year, as opposed to just once every 10, or 15, or 20, or 25 years, each year you get a little bit more, so you really are getting rewarded, literally, for each year you stay. But again, it's an opinion, I mean, I know people have feelings on both sides, but it's just, I think it's, it's an interesting way of doing it. I like it better than the other way.
Okay. Any other comments on that, on increasing it year by year?
I, before I would venture an opinion on that, yes, I wanna see what the numbers run to. Here, we know, if, if you call this number two, the 17, 18, 19, and 2050, we know that that number comes out to 60,000, and the committee has made a recommendation that comes out to 67. If you increase it every year, I mean, that's, that's a whole nother thing, and we don't know where, I don't know where that comes out to be. I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, I just don't know what it is. So, what would you, after 10 years of service, would you start at 1,700 again, and then add 100, so that by the time you're at 15, now it's 2,200?
No, I mean, kinda looking at it in perspective, if you've been here 10 years, you get 1,750, so you basically get $175 a year. If you've worked 25 years, you get $2,500, you basically get 100 bucks a year. So I'm saying this-
What happens in year 11? How much do you get in year 11?
Well, what I, what I, but what I'm saying is, is the way that's set up right now, if you've been here 10 years, you get 175 bucks a year. Right?
Right.
If you've been here 25 years, you get 100 bucks a year. We're almost pseudo-penalizing people that have been here 100, you know, been here 25 years, because we're giving them less than somebody that's been here 10. So I'm saying this is, even if you said, okay, we're gonna do 100, $100 a year, year 10 would be 1,000, 11 be 11, and then when you get to 25, you'd be at the 2,500. So the people that have stayed for the 25 years would get 100, and you could even expand that out to 30, up to cap it at 30.
So you wanna start it lower?
Right. Because then that way, the employees that have been here longest see the best, the biggest benefit, versus somebody that's been here 10 years. I'm not, I'm just throwing it out as a concept, I mean, I, you know-
Well, okay, as a concept, does anybody wanna start it lower and move it along like that? Is that kinda what, okay, so, so, anybody else?
Is that what the intention, that the total stays the same? Or lower? Or lower? Is that what, what would the-
Well, it would, it would ultimately be lower, but I mean, the 25, the guy that's been here 25 years would, would get the same amount of money, but you know, for, for just doing it on a strict year-by-year basis, you know, and the same thing even going back to '05, you know, 10 years, it was $170 a year, 25 years, you're not even making 100 bucks a year.
I understand, I'm just trying to understand what the proposal is.
Well, eventually, is, essentially, I mean, if you pay somebody 1,750, and you drop it to 1,000, you're gonna, you're gonna save money, so I mean, it would ultimately be lower, but I wouldn't go any lower than that, but I think that would be fair for anybody that's been here for 25 years, they would actually get, you know, the same amount as somebody that's only been here 10, on a per-year basis.
Rob?
Thanks. The concept is intriguing, it just sounds complicated. I guess my question would be, from a finance standpoint, would that just be more busy work?
Well, it would be, it would be more, it would be more work, it would be also difficult to just project what those costs are. Certainly, if that's something the council wants to consider, I guess I'd ask that consideration be made to put it back to the Employee Advisory Committee to analyze it.
Okay. So, that's one. As I look at this, I kinda like a combination, I like 17, 18, 2,000, and 2,500. Just because, you know, it's just free money that we're giving to somebody because they've been here for 10 years, or 15, or 20, or 25 years, so I'm not necessarily opposed to what Brad is saying, I don't know, I mean, based on the calculations, they were at 1,350, if you increase by CPI, which is a way of doing it, we don't have to do that, because this is just give me money. So, I guess, let's, let's see if we can narrow this down. How many people would like to have the Finance Department investigate Brad's idea and come back with, with a number for us? I'm not sure exactly where, where we're starting, are we starting at 1,000 and moving up 100 a year, Brad, is that what your idea was?
Yeah, I mean, just that way, the guy that's been here 25 years getting 100 bucks.
Okay, so, so we start at 10 years of service equals $1,000, and plus 100 over you after that?
Correct.
Okay, so, that being said, how many people would like to investigate that? All those in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three. So, three's not four. All right, that being said, we've got-
Does that mean you didn't vote, but you voted no, or?
I voted no.
Okay.
So we've got the recommendation of 1,750, 2,000, 2,250, and 2,500. I put out 17, 18, 2,000, and 2,500. So, since mine, and nobody else put one, so I'll put that one out. Is anybody interested in doing 17, 18, 2,000, and 2,500? If you are, please raise your hand. That's a loser. So that leaves 1,750, 2,000, 2,250, and 2,500, which was what's proposed by the Employee Advisory Committee. All those in favor of using that, please raise your hand. That's a majority, that's the way you've got your direction.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the next one now, that's vacation and sick benefits schedules.
Yes, thank you. The, we did have some previous discussion to point out that when in late 2010 and early 2011, the city changed its vacation accrual methods for employees hired after those dates, as well as sick leave. The language that was associated with it has not only been extreme in terms of the accrual number limit, but also difficult to manage from a department operations standpoint, when employees have to take vacation, or lose it even within their first year of service, for example, and only have, as currently, within the employee rules and regulations, a limit of 80 hours of sick leave, so the Employee Advisory Committee would like to see the employees all on one schedule, and the recommendation for both the vacation benefits and the sick leave would be to remove what we call the Tier Two schedules, and place all employees, regardless of their hire dates, into the same benefit schedules as all employees that were hired prior to 2011. If the council committee feels that that's not acceptable, we have, as a committee, provided two alternatives within each area, both vacation benefits and sick leave, one based on, for both of them, whether it's vacation and sick, going back to schedules roughly 10, 15 years ago, and working off of that forward, to limit the accruals, in the case of vacation, basically what is proposed as an alternate would be to limit it to the current year's earnings, plus the previous year's earnings, to give the employees the ability to schedule more lengthy vacations, you know, with their 10 or 20 days within their first couple of years of service, which also helps in terms of management and scheduling and productivity and the like, than to have employees having to take vacation, and especially when they don't have any reason to use it, other than to keep their accruals down. For sick leave, similar concepts provided for the alternatives, if the council is not comfortable with going back to just a single tier where all employees are treated the same, so if there's questions with regards to the schedules here that are presented within the alternate one or two, I'd be happy to answer them specifically, without spending a whole lot of time explaining them. Basically, one of the alternatives uses the Sickage Report from 2012's averages to come up with the numbers that are within the report.
Can you explain Tier Two? Because I don't see Tier Two written here anywhere, unless I'm missing it.
In terms of what we mean by Tier Three?
How does it compare? I mean, I thought we put in Tier Two for newer employees, so that it helped reduce our costs.
Correct, and within each section is-
So, that being said, for the Employee Advisory Committee saying abolish Tier Two, I'm totally against that. We put it in for a specific reason, so that's my opinion, I don't know how in the outs feels, but, and I don't see Tier Two here, so I don't know how these all compare to Tier Two, I'm assuming there are some, there's some changes to them.
I can answer that.
Okay.
If you, under this A, vacation benefit, which starts on page four and goes to page five in this report, after alternate two, for reference, there is the Tier Two current vacation schedule, which illustrates, for example, years of service zero to five, earns 80 hours of vacation in a year, or 10 days, their accumulation or their accrual is capped out at 40 hours, or five days that they can have on the books. For sick leave, which is on page six, at the very bottom is the Tier Two sick leave schedule for your reference, which has only four hours per day, or I'm sorry, four hours per month earned, as opposed to the eight hours per day that are what we call Tier One employees have. The accrual cap is 80 hours, whereas with employees in Tier One hired before 2010, it goes up, I don't remember the exact number, it's more than 720 hours, let's put it that way. I don't remember what the exact cap is, we didn't put it in the report, but Tier Two is down there at the bottom.
How about we abolish everything and put everybody on Tier Twos, they're all the same? I mean, I'm saying that facetiously, but that's just as silly as saying abolish Tier Two and change it all, so with that, I've said enough. Mike?
Fred, obviously, you guys did a little bit of work on this, let me just ask a general question, what, what kind of a dollar figure can we attach to this, if we took your recommendation? Either a higher, low, or ballpark? I mean, there's obviously gonna be a higher cost to the city.
We have not gone to analyze that with regards to the cost. I guess there's different ways of looking at what the true cost is of vacation and sick leave, that wasn't part of the exercise, we certainly can go back and provide analysis of that, if the council wants to get into cost comparisons of sick and vacation. From this point, the committee is simply looking at it in terms of trying to be both fair to the employees, looking at what the Sickage Report provided in terms of the communities that were discussed, what their averages are, we currently, by just looking at the Tier Two schedules, are extremely low in terms of how we manage, how we provide days of vacation, how we provide sick hours, and how limited the employees are to having an accrual bank, so the committee felt that this is going to, if it isn't already, at some competitive disadvantage, I think we talked a little bit about that a few months ago, in terms of employee recruitment, employee retention, that our schedules right now are extremely low, I think is a safe way to put it. it.
Okay. And I hear you can't answer the question, and that's fair, because we didn't ask you to do that. So, I wouldn't expect you to know it off the top of your head. But I just, just looking at it just from, you know, its face value, you're asking us to make a pretty dramatic change that's going to impact our city pretty dramatically. And I guess I'd really have to have some numbers put together for it before I really could support it. I'm not necessarily against it. I just, it just seems like you're really making us ask us a dramatic change. I mean, we put Tier One in, Tier Two in for a very specific reason. And now, to go from Tier Two to all the way to what everybody else was doing, just seems to be a really huge financial leap for the city. So, I'd really be reluctant to approve it. But just, again, that's just an opinion with a very initial thought on it.
And these proposal alternates were put together with that consideration, that if the council wishes to reduce the overall accrual ability, which is what we understood that the proposals were, and the reason why council did that, that's fine, and that's recognized. But again, the level to which the schedules were changed back in 2010, 2011 is something that's radically different than what we have been able to find anywhere within not only the Sickage Survey, but within independent surveys that we've conducted in public works several years ago.
Thanks.
But I'm just going to jump in here. I don't find the hours that you can carry over, or the days you can carry over, much different than what I see in business. It may be different in the public sector, but it certainly looks pretty, I mean, 10 years of, 10 days of vacation, 15, 20, and 25, and you can carry five over every year. That seems relatively normal from a business perspective. To be able to carry over 25 and 50 days is just, it's unheard of in the business sector. My comment. Anybody else? Brad?
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. I'd like to take this in two different things, because you're 100% right. Alderman asked us that when we put this in place, it was put in place for a specific reason, which was to reduce costs to the residents moving forward, so that we didn't have to continue to tax them to death. That was the whole reason we did this. It's the same reason that Illinois, the state of Illinois is now doing some of the things that they're doing, looking at Tier Two. I would not be in favor in any way, shape, or form changing Tier Two to Tier One. I think that would be a mistake, and I think that would cost the residents a lot of money. That being said, I did have a conversation with Fred, and I had, the last time this came up, and I also had a conversation with Barry, that the wording of it needs to be wordsmithed, in the sense that one of the things that, the way it's written, is the maximum they can accrue is five days. So, at the end of a year, let's assume that the employee carries over five days. After he gets his January day, he has to take that vacation day, or he loses it, because he can only have five, and now he's going to have six. That doesn't seem to make sense. And I know that when we put it in place, that was not our goal.
You're correct.
So, I think the wordsmithing, to make it so that Fred gets what he needs, which is a little bit of management, is whatever the employee is capable of earning in the year, so in other words, anybody from one to five, I think we've got it right now, gets 10 days, the maximum that could be accrued for that year is whatever you earn plus five. So, at the end of the year, you could theoretically have 15. You have to use 10 in that year. But this way, if the employee doesn't want to take a day in February, January, February, March, April, May, he can keep those, and then in July, he can take 12 days of vacation, because he would have 12, which keeps us where we want to be, which is the accruals stay capped, and we don't have these big carryovers. But it also allows flexibility from a management perspective and from an employee's perspective, because now they can actually take a two-week vacation in the middle of summer, versus otherwise, they're not going to be able to. That being said, one of the things that I am not a fan of is the fact that, you know, we currently allow two and a half times carryover for Tier One employees. So, if a Tier One employee gets five weeks vacation, he can technically carry over 12 and a half weeks. I don't know of anywhere in the private sector that occurs. You're right. It happens in the public sector all the time, but that's part of the reason we have a $5 million unfunded liability called compensated absences, because we've allowed people to carry these things over. And now, when we give a 2% raise, that gets put on the 12 and a half weeks. And then the next year, we give a 2% raise, and that gets put on the 12 and a half weeks. This compounds, and the power of compounding is enormous. So, you know, from a vacation perspective, I'm okay tweaking it. And I think that that's something that we should come to a conclusion, if we can tonight, on that aspect only, in the sense that if we can get staff to bring us a resolution, we can change that so that we stop the problems that are actually occurring from that, which was not what designed. I mean, it just happened that way because of the wordsmithing. So, that's something I think we should do, so that, you know, Fred has the ability, and the employees have the ability, versus waiting for the whole package. And I get the rest of the stuff's going to come up in a package, or in separate ordinances, at whatever point in time. But if we don't change that now, you know, and wait five months, you've got employees being forced to take vacation to not do it. But my contention is, you know, as we started this thing, is, you know, I'm looking to stop the carryover of these large amounts of time. And if we have to get to a point, and Mayor Rooney brought it up, that part of the reason we've had this is the fact that there was never a payout ability. I'm fine with that. If somebody, you know, if we can come to, and maybe the Employee Advisory Committee can come up with some scenario, that disregard what we already have carried over, but if we take everybody to one-time carryovers, so if you get five weeks, you only can carry over five weeks, or six, or four, whatever it is, I'm comfortable if we figure out some scenario that we can, that people could get paid out, that, you know, by November 1st, they have to notify their department head that I want to get paid out on a week's vacation.
Okay. But is that taking us away from what we're talking about here?
Well, no, because this is, it's not in the sense that, you know, if we're going to look at changing Tier Two, the whole process in my mind was to change Tier One and lower Tier One's carryover.
I don't think we're talking about that. I think we're just talking about what their recommendations are right now, and whether we want to move ahead with their recommendations or not.
Sorry. So, and maybe I misunderstood. So, this is only going to be to change two to one, or change two, and then we're going to come back and address Tier One?
The Employee Advisory Committee has only taken up and presented tonight the analysis with regards, and recommendations with regard to the accrual rates for the, what we call the second tier. If you look at the last page of this report, staff did put a proposal together in terms of future topics, and I believe May is when we are proposing to schedule, after further analysis of it, vacation earnings payout and vacation accrual, annual rate of earnings, were topics that I believe you brought up last year.
Okay. My misunderstanding. My apologies. So, going back to the vacation, then, I think we should talk about changes, so that the wordsmithings there. I'm not in favor of changing anybody from Tier Two to Tier One, because it was put into place for a specific reason. And I'm not, and the same for sick time, and there's actually...
Well, let's just do one at a time. I mean, I know they're similar but different, but let's just handle, we're doing vacation now. So, the Advisory Committee said abolish Tier Two, go with Alternate One or Alternate Two. Brad, you say?
My contention is leave well enough alone. Those points for a specific reason. The only thing I would consider is, you know, if we want to go from zero, from six to 15, you only get 15 days. If we wanted to change that to, you know, six to 13, and maybe make, you know, six to 12, and make that 15, and then 12 to 18, I'm just throwing out numbers now, make that like 17 days, and then 18 to 25 would be the 20. So, add another level in between those two. So, we'd have five levels. I'd be okay with something like that.
Okay.
But otherwise, you know, basically leaving it the same. And it wouldn't impact anybody yet, because nobody's been here six years on Tier Two.
Okay. So, let's continue on this discussion with vacation. Who, Len?
When I came on the council and, you know, was going through this, I was not really crazy about some of the things that Tier Two did. I know, short term, it saved us quotes of money, but it also put in place where employees either use it or lose it. And management may need an employee, and the employee's going to come up to you and say, "If I don't take this vacation day, I'm going to lose it." So, that was, so now, you're sort of punishing the employee, and you're sort of, you're punishing the city where they may need some manpower. I understand where Alderman Judd is coming and trying to cap some of these accruals. However, I just think that the way this was put through, I know that you two are against removing Tier Two at all costs. However, I just look at the potential problems with this, and I would support their recommendation.
Okay. Anyone else want to make a comment on this? Rob?
Thank you. Abolishing a tier would mean the 30-some people who are in that tier would get, I mean, you would bring them up with increased numbers of vacations. Those would be created instantly, right?
Yeah. They default into Tier One.
And that's part of the costs we're talking about here. We now have, I don't know what this spread is. I'm sorry, I didn't, there are different levels of steps here, so it is somewhat confusing. I'm not, I'm not a big fan of different tiers within the same organization, just because it's kind of a drag when you get hired, and you're working next to somebody who, I guess, had the good fortune of getting hired before you. And like Len said, I understand why that was done. I guess all I can say is I'm not a big fan. The alternates, I'm, I would like to, I mean, we tasked the EAC with bringing forward some suggestions. They have, you know, their basic one, abolish it. I'm not sure if, you know, if it was put to a vote right now, if that would be the easiest thing. I wouldn't want to vote for something like that until I heard. I mean, if that's an enormous cost, I would want to know that for sure. Definitely a fan of the wordsmithing. I'm definitely not a fan of accruing large numbers of vacation and sick time. So, I agree with Alderman Judd in that regard. And I think he's got a good idea in terms of, if we do want to tinker with this, possibly add another step. So, we're at least, if we have to have what I consider less than optimal, that double tier, then at least bring that Tier Two closer to Tier One in terms of what they're getting. So, I'd be open to his suggestion. And I think it was fairly vague, but that's the whole point. We don't, we don't know without, you know, spending another half hour on it, which we probably don't want to. So, I think I made it clear. I'd be a fan of, number one, the wordsmithing. That's obviously something we have to do. And number two, maybe insert another step in that Tier Two vacation schedule. Thanks.
Okay.
Just a quick question. Am I correct in the fact we have 28 employees in Tier Two?
31.
Oh, 31 in Tier, oh, I'm sorry.
No, Tier Two's, well, Tier One's 31, 59 or something, and Tier One's 13 or 18.
So, Tier One has, there are 31 employees, and there's 59. There are 31 employees of the 59 total in Tier One.
But there's some...
Okay. What's, Fred?
Just concerned, trying to answer the question. I hear 31 number, and I'm not sure where that came from, but Melissa and I both believe that we may not have 31 yet in Tier Two. It's probably less than that. The 31 number I know is within the longevity in terms of employees getting longevity. I'd ask that we can certainly get that information back to, you know, in the Friday Report, or at the next discussion on this, this exact number of Tier Two employees.
Again, when it was longevity, it talked about 31 employees of the 59 total, Tier One. So, that was only longevity. Actually, numbers are thrown out about who's in.
There's less than 10 in public works right now.
Thank you.
Laura, anything else?
No. Thank you.
Before, nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Let me go in here, and let me get in here now for a second, Brad, then I'll get it to you. I'm good with the wordsmithing, because I think that was the intention, was that the employee could carry five days over and not have to use one every month, so that at the, essentially at the end of year two, they could have 15 days accrued. And then, as it moved into Tier, into year three, they can only carry five more, five over. So, the five gives them basically, yes. So, I agree with the wordsmithing. As far as adding another level, I'm neither a fan nor a foe. I can go either way, but, I mean, I'm either one way or another. Brad?
The only request I have is if we're going to ask staff to run numbers of what it would cost to move people from Tier One to Tier Two to Tier One, I would also request that we make it so they take that out 10 years, because the numbers explode over the course of time. And so, it's not that it's going to cost us $17,000 to move people from Tier Two to Tier One now. It's the fact that over the course of the next 10 years, it's going to cost us another 170 grand, or whatever the number might be, because then you're carrying over all these accruals, and you're giving all these people all this time, that that's where the numbers start to explode. And, you know, you can interpolate it out to 30 or 40 years, if they would be a normal Tier One. So, that's why we did it, to keep the cost down over the course of time, not for four years, but to perpetuity. That's the whole purpose of it, just like the state of Illinois moving people to, you know, the new tiers for pensions, and, you know, 401Ks and whatnot, because it's just unsustainable. So, if we, if we're going to ask them to run numbers to bring it up to Tier Two, to abolish Tier Two, they need to go out 10 or 20 years as well, and give us that forecast to say, if we do this, you know, right now, today, it's going to cost us X amount of dollars to bring them up. But over the course of the next 10 years, this is going to be your cost. And over the course of the next 20, this is going to be your cost. So, then, we can explain to the residents why we just, you know, gave away 100, or 200, or 300, or whoever knows how much money it is.
Okay. So, any other comments? Because I think we want to try to give a little bit of direction on this one. So, the recommendation was to abolish Tier Two. So, we would, that would mean we'd all go back to Tier One. So, I don't even know if we can call a question, get a straw pull on that without knowing numbers first.
If you don't get four votes, then, you know, you got it.
Well, we can...
Well, you're right. I mean, I wouldn't raise my hand, because like I...
You don't know what the numbers are.
I would need to know numbers.
Okay. So, I guess before, we can't ask about abolishing Tier Two till we get some numbers. And Brad's point is well taken. You can't do it for a year. You're going to have to lay it out for like 10 years, just to see what it does. Okay. Wordsmithing, to correct the problem that we seem to have caused, can we, can we wordsmith this and make the correction, so nobody has to do anything? So, all in favor of making the wordsmith correction until we get the rest of this taken care of? Please signify by raising your hand. Okay. So, we got the wordsmithing taken care of. So we got the wordsmithing taken care of. I'm sorry? Sure, go ahead.
Yes, it was seven.
Yeah, it was seven.
Alderman Judd brings up a point, and those are the hard costs, but I would like a memo accompanying that about what the soft costs would be, you know? And in other words, you know, what staff trying to hire people, retain people, turnover people, what their thoughts would be. Because that, you have the hard costs, okay, that's one aspect of it, but what does it cost us down the road if we start to become a turnstile? Because I just recall that the city went through that in the late 90s because we were behind in many areas, and we had a constant turnover in many departments, and there was a great deal of, we were saving, quote, lots of money short-term, but long-term, we were constantly having to retrain and train new people and hire people.
Well, I guess staff could follow that, put a note on there. I mean, obviously would be relatively subjective because you can't, or subjective. So that's fine, staff, you can add a little note on there too, for the soft cost.
So noted. We'll take that back to the committee.
Okay. And?
Still one more item.
Yeah, I know. Okay. Sick leave benefit. Fred, you want to walk us through this one?
Yes. The-
Is it?
It's going to be the same animal. You know, if you're going to take, if you're going to wipe out Tier Two, if nobody's willing to say, I can't do it without the numbers, you just, you got to get the numbers and run it. I mean, you got to run the same thing, you know, what it would cause us to do today, plus 10, plus 20, you know, so essentially 15 and 25.
Okay. Let's get those numbers.
I mean, it's a ton of work for staff, but if that's the direction of the council, that's the direction of the council.
Then we need to get those numbers. Len? And the soft cost?
Well, the soft costs and what effects, because as I look at what Tier Two did, we do have employees that can become sick and will run out of sick days before they can go on disability. So maybe they can add into that also.
Add into what? I mean, because I have to tell you what, that happens to me now. I could run out of sick days before I go into long-term disability, which is why I have to buy short-term disability.
Correct. And I'm just asking for it to be put into the discussion.
So do we allow our employees to buy short-term disability?
We don't know.
We have no plan for that currently.
Do they buy long-term disability?
Typically, the non-unions are all IMRF. So your first 30 days are going to be on your own. On day 31, that's when IMRF disability would kick in if you're going to apply for that. So again, your first 30 days are really on your own.
That's also a cost after IMRF kicks in that we're paying for, and as we allow accruals, then we're paying for something nobody utilizes. So it's an interesting animal, it's an interesting dynamic, but, you know, the flip side is, I mean, I guess the only thing I would add to Alderman, you know, Prina is, you know, if you look and talk to any financial person in the world, any financial advisor or anything like that, everybody says you need to, you're supposed to have three to six months, you know, safety net of your own. If the employee has two weeks and has to eat two weeks, that's part of the three to six-month safety net people are supposed to have. It's not our job as a council or as residents to make sure that every little iota that happens to an employee is taken care of. I get it that people want that, but, you know, what we talked about three hours ago, raising taxes for roads, and then we turn around and say, okay, let's see how much more we can give the employees. Something doesn't jive somewhere. Thanks.
Any other comments on this? If not, I think staff's got a lot of stuff to figure out for us before we can go any further. Okay. I think that's it.
Brad Singen, this is time. Whoa, no more sugar.
Sugar for Alderman Judd.
There you go. Mr. Cannon, you can have it.
We're done. Goodbye. This meeting stands adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.